All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education regular meeting of Wednesday, November 29th, 2023, to order. Annie, would you care to lead us in the pledge? Thank you. I hope everybody had a restful break over Thanksgiving. We have our new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources here with his family, Dr. Dawn Mara. So, in light of that, I'd like to take a motion to move up item 4.1 on our agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. I'll take a motion for Agenda item 4.1, Resolution to Approve an Agreement with the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. All right, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. All right, congratulations, Dr. Mara. We warmly welcome you to the Osning community. We know you'll do an exceptional job holding down the fort at Executive Boulevard for us. You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
I'll be short, but I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Mary Fox Alter, to the Board of Education, and to the Executive Cabinet. It was a real pleasure speaking with all of you during the process, and I can't wait to join all of you and be a great part of this team. And I so look forward to it, and it's an honor and a privilege to be here. I can't wait. I'm very excited. So, thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you.
And you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'll understand if you want to make your graceful exit as well, too.
There will be meetings in the future.
Yes, there's so many opportunities to attend, really.
I would recommend taking advantage of tonight.
All right, tonight's first work session item is 2.1, the Superintendent's Update. So, I'm going to turn things over to Interim Superintendent Mary Fox Alter.
All right. Thank you, everyone. First of all, I'd like to start my update with two important shout-outs to our Assistant Superintendent Alita Zuber. First, if any of you happen to have noticed, one of the leading articles in Low-Hud today, it says, "Many Westchester youth face poverty, homelessness, and lack of Internet." Here in Osning, we're thrilled with Alita's leadership, that she was able to ensure that all of our schools were eligible, SEP-eligible, for part of the Free and Reduced Lunch/Breakfast Program. And then, almost immediately, very proactively, she pursued the Federal Participation Connection Program for Internet Access for All Families. Tomorrow, letters will be going out to eligible families that they will get a reduction in their monthly Internet bill. So, Alita, I just want to give you a huge shout-out for that big equity issue and trying and being just that proactive, seeing it, getting on top of it very quickly. I could not believe the speed of which that was addressed, so thank you for that, Alita. The next item I have to... So, the next item I have to give her a big shout-out for, our Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs, as you do know, is a collaborative partner, and many school districts are looking at, gee, how are we able or how are we going to address the feasibility of starting electric buses with the governor's timeline? So, PNW BOCs has put out a request to school districts who would like to participate in an RFP to do study the feasibility of this and to address many of the points and items along the way. So, again, that's such a green initiative and having experts involved in the field. So, immediately, Jim and Alita, this morning, signed us up to be part of that study. So, I know this is a question the Board has asked on multiple times, but our participation in this will just gain us a lot of really great information that I'm sure this Board will be anxious to have. So, again, Alita, thank you for those two things. So, on, just on a broad stroke again, it was a very, very busy month of November. I want to congratulate our schools. Roosevelt School had their fall class. Claremont held Enrichment Day. I managed to drop by at least 20 different classrooms, and it was fabulous. I just absolutely had a great day. I just had a great day, I tell you. Winter sports are kicking off this evening, so I wish the best to all of our student athletes. AMD and OHS Photography Students participated in the 10th Annual Living History Veterans Project. The Orchestra Program had the opportunity to showcase their musical talents at the First Annual White Plains Orchestra Festival. Park had their Pre-K Festival. O'Prime feeding Westchester a meals on Main Street, and all the volunteers managed to distribute 150 turkeys prior to Thanksgiving. So, that was also phenomenal. We held our Stone Soup Event at Brookside School. AMD had the incredible opportunity to be ambassadors for change at the Middle Schools Human Rights Institute. So, thank you to Dr. Deely and to Sue Ostrowski and our AMD team. Many of you were aware that OHS hosted Dr. Youssef Salam and his mother. It was a fabulous session. Park School had their annual Send a Kid to Camp Thanksgiving raffle. And we have been super busy with regards to facilities. Our new facilities website is live, and it will go out as part of my link. And again, I want to thank the Board for their proactivity, particularly the Communications Subcommittee, for helping us craft our Q&As and getting lots of information out to folks. And Alita and I will be next week hosting Facility Projects Meetings at the... One for the elementary schools on Tuesday night at 7:00, another at AMD on Tuesday, the 12th, and at OHS on Monday, the 11th. So, all that information, again, will be going out to schools. The posters are on all the buildings. And we now have, and again, it was a Board request, we did get placards that we can mount on stands just to give people some visuals on all of this. But again, a lot of really great work taking place, and I want to thank everyone for their help and support as we do this. We had a great explore and learn. Christine was there, Catherine was there. Kind of a busy morning, lots of people dropped by. We had a lot of really great conversations. And again, just looking forward to these opportunities to talk about our capital improvement facilities plan. So, with that, we have a full agenda tonight. That's my Superintendent's Update.
Can I just ask a quick question for those upcoming meetings? Couple of members of the community asked for the, I guess, the Roosevelt slash 5, 6, 7, 8 piece. Would that be the middle school facilities project on the 12th, or the elementary project meeting on the 5th, or they can attend both?
They could attend both.
Right.
Because I will touch upon all.
Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you so much for highlighting everybody's excellent work. Our next agenda item is 2.2, and is our Equity Agenda Item. So, Special Education, ENL, Dual Language, Federal Funds, ESSR, and Title Funds. And I would like to invite our presenters up and turn things over to Kimberly Mauricio, Jessica Jean Grande, and Lindsay McGann to present.
So, right before we do that, I'm going to ask Mirala to come up, because we left Mirala out of the title even though...
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mirala.
No, you wouldn't have known. I just, we just caught that. So, Mirala, First Steps Program, if you want to come up first, she has a couple of short slides. You can, Mirala, you can sit at the table. Right, the two of you can sit. Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah, yeah.
And I, Ms. Nora, as she is called in the community, has been a pillar of the dual language program for over 21 years. Ms. Nora has, what I tell you, the empathy and kindness and expertise to meet the needs of every single child in this district. Over 5,000 children have gone through First Steps, and we're just going to share with you a couple of little things about First Steps. So, Ms. Nora, of K&amp;R, is the coordinator of the program, and I have the privilege of helping her supervise the activity leaders in the program. Sorry, am I doing this right? Oh, there it goes. Okay. So, the mission of the First Steps Program is basically, we want to make sure that our students, every single child from 0 to 3, has the opportunity to close the opportunity as well as the achievement gap. We expect that our students who go through the First Steps Program have the opportunity to receive the same types of skills in literacy, in mathematical skills, in colors, in numbers, so that they are prepared for Pre-K. But not only are they, are we preparing our students, but we're also preparing our parents. As we always say in Osning, parents are a child's first teacher. So, we know that First Steps is crucial, because not only do we support our students, but we support our parents as well. Our staff is comprised of Ms. Nora, as she is called affectionately by all. We have two activity leaders, Ms. Daphne Forjonesi and Patricia Ortiz, with two teaching assistants, Sandra and Josefa, and I am their supervisor. This presentation might be longer. Okay, thank you so much. So, here is a glimpse into a month in First Steps.
So, this is our staff calendar, just showing our community partners and their inclusion into classroom sessions, as well as parent workshops. And we have a playgroup program for 2-year-olds, as well as our Friday Interactive Family Program.
We're so excited. Our students come to First Steps four days a week, Monday through Thursday. Every Monday, every child comes with their parent or guardian. And together, our activity leaders teach our parents alongside their children how to have conversations with their children, how to read stories out loud with their children, and the types of questions to ask. So, basically, our activity leaders are modeling for our families how they should read at home, how they should play with numbers, how when they're going to the grocery stores, they should ask questions about quantity and shapes and categorizing. So, we're very excited about that day, and we have excellent attendance every single Monday. Then, on Fridays, we have the programming.
So, what we're really doing is striving to give every child an opportunity to succeed. So, out of our 60 students, we have 23 students receiving or in the process of receiving speech, OT, or PT services. So, that comes to 38% of our population in little school, showing that they are or have a need. And so, it just truly proves that we are serving our neediest students. And making sure that we are in alignment with Park School, because that's where most of our students are going to go. We give the Brigance Assessment, and we do that twice, a pre-test and a post-test, and the post-test scores actually go to Park School with those students. So, they get to really know what we've accomplished for our students in little school. Emergent literacy, of course, as a literacy program, is very important. We are still continuing to do the Raising a Reader Program, making sure that students have books, a bag of books to take home every single week, and the parents are really enjoying that, as well as the students. With trips, of course, funding in little school is very sparse. We're looking for funding every year, but free community activities are what we're looking for. So, two weeks ago, we took a trip to the Central Fire Station in Osning. It was a great experience for the students, as well as parent volunteers that actually walked from First Steps Maple Place to the firehouse on Spring Street, and that was a really fun activity. And we're planning a spring trip to the Osning Post Office. So, free local activities is what we've been trying to implement. With collaboration with partners, over 10 years for each of the following, Katona Museum of Art, T-Town Lake Reservation, Cornell Cooperative Extension, of course, Neighbors Link, and Osning Public Library, and Osning Open Door, we've continued to have collaborative efforts with them. Katona Museum, over 10 years, like I said, has come in to do the Arte Juntos Program with Little School. T-Town received a grant specifically for First Steps to provide 10 in-classroom nurture-by-nature sessions, which is amazing, and the students love that. And we get to take a trip in the spring to T-Town as well. And the Guidance Center of Westchester has been providing to staff twice a week to come in to talk about social-emotional development and help students that do have social-emotional needs, as well as give support to parents in the program. And we have a 2-year-old playgroup program, because we want to start from our youngest, and we want to start from the infants, but unfortunately, that's not feasible. So, with 2-year-olds, just giving them an opportunity to experience group play is very important, and that sets them up to be able to participate in our little school program and just give them a sense of continuity. And for our families, what is really important and special about First Steps is our programs being really inclusive of parents and engaging either grandparents or adoptive parents or just, you know, family support in general. We have on Mondays our interactive program where the parents, like Ms. Quelio said, stay with the children in the classroom and gain that experience and knowledge about what happens in the classroom, so that they are more comfortable having conversation with the teachers, talking to other parents, building a sense of community. And that has helped when they move on, they're not afraid to be able to talk to the teacher. And parent workshops is so important. We feel that parents can't just sit by and let the teacher instruct. They have to learn how to take care of their child as well in terms of educational success. So, we do have parenting workshops for them, using partners like Open Door or Neighbors Link to give some of the workshops that we do offer.
The Public Library, of course.
Yes. At the Osning Public Library, we've built such a great collaboration with them that on Fridays, we do have our Little Readers Program at Osning Library every Friday. So, knowing that funding is so important, this program has been in the district for 21 years. We want it to continue, and we're looking always for more support. Helene Mantel has been working so hard trying to find funding. Nothing has been coming through, but Mirala will take you through the next slide about funding.
And I also just want to know, make a note that if you don't know where First Steps is located, it's actually at the First Steps Presbyterian Church, right across the street from the high school. And they have been amazing hosts for us and for our families, so we just want to thank them for that. The demographics of our First Steps Program, as you can see, our population is mostly Hispanic, and the majority of our students do come from Ecuador, but we do have a smattering of other populations as well. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see a breakdown. In First Steps, we actually have 60 students, and the program is, and Little School has 60 students, and they come in the morning for the AM group and then the PM group. And then, Little School, which actually, Ms. Nora is so humble, she doesn't say that on top of all of her responsibilities, she's also the one that runs playgroup on Wednesdays. I always get them mixed up. So, we, this is the population of our Little School Program, as you can see. We try to include all the students that we can in the community, but it's still not enough. So, Nora continuously starts working in March to start registering students for next year. And every single year, there is a list of students who unfortunately are not able to participate into First Steps, because it's a small program. We would love to expand it if that's a possibility, and I'll talk to you a little bit about a conversation that Alita and I have been having with Open Door. However, we know that these students, when they go to pre-kindergarten, are ready to succeed and to excel with their teachers, not only academically, but also socially, emotionally, and they're set for any special ed services that they might need. Kathleen Walsh works very closely with Ms. Nora to ensure that students are receiving the appropriate services. So, Nora has mentioned funding. We are so thankful, and we want to give a shout-out to the following people and organizations. Without their support, First Steps could not happen. Doug and Mary Pat Apucci and the Southster Foundation. They have been donating funds to our school in order to support this amazing program. Additionally, we have had to use Title I funds in order to continue every single year. And right now, we have had the opportunity to have conversations with Open Door. They're hoping to start a Head Start Program, where in this Head Start Program, we would have more community students participate actually in the program. So, that's something that we're working with, and we'll be able to update you further as we get further along with that. And that's it. We just felt that it was important that you are aware that Osning continues to strive to support our literate learners, and that we are doing everything in our power to make sure that they're excellently ready for Pre-K.
And this was one of the programs the Board had asked in the beginning of the year that they wanted a report about. I do have to apologize for the line through it. Cinderella is taking place soon here, and they hung up special lighting for it, and one of the cables from the lights is blocking the bottom of the slide. So, that's the issue here. So, apologize for that.
Thank you. And we welcome visitors. If you want to stop by and meet our students and our activity leaders and meet with Mr. Nora and have further conversations, feel free. We accept donations from the community. O'Prime has been amazing in providing snacks for us, supplies, materials. So, we also thank Megan for her support as well.
Questions from the Board?
I get asked by parents of young kids a lot about different options that they have for childcare or just, you know, more free or affordable programming. Is there an income limit to join First Steps?
We do have some criteria, but anybody is welcome to apply. Of course, the program is free, and it is only a two-hour program.
Yeah, I had a follow-up to Annie's question. So, what, I see the application online. So, how, two pieces to this. What are the criteria to be able to get into the program? Or does everyone, do you have enough spaces for everyone interested? Or like, in this case, you have 60, but you had 100 people, so you had to turn 40 away. Can you talk to that a little?
So, the application you might be looking at is just the general First Steps application that's open to everyone. Specifically for little school, there is an application which takes into account income, family numbers in the family, boy-girl ratio, as well as family needs, if there is medical issues or any extenuating circumstances. So, there's, I think it's six criteria that we go by that's on the application, for little school in particular. And there's only 60 spots available for little school. And then, for the playgroup program, that's generally a little less strict on criteria, but we do try to be inclusive, and some parents who may make more, may have other needs. So, we take all those into account.
And so, do you have, like, do you have more applications than the spots currently? Or do you have exactly enough?
Yes, we do. We do have more applicants than we do have spots. So, there is a waitlist, and if things happen with families, they move out of the community per se, then I would use the waitlist to put more students in.
And so, thank you for that. And then, so the other piece of this, as you've indicated, now, there's data that show that early exposure to these type of programs leads to better outcome. Do you currently, and if not, that's okay, but maybe going forward, there's an opportunity to say, okay, so here's some children who are in the program. Do you sort of track how they do in kindergarten and first and beyond that to see, you know, what...
I know some years ago, there was opportunity for them. So, when children applied to Park School, it is documented that they were a little school child. So, that's a way for them to track how the little school students are doing throughout their school years in Osning. So, I'm not sure what the process is now, but they continue to have that spot on the Pre-K applications that say they're a little school student.
And one of the reasons why we began to utilize the Brigance Assessment last year was precisely that, so that we could have a measurement that is comparable to the one that is being used in Pre-K. So, then we'll see a growth for a number of years for those students. Ms. Macia, the principal of Park School, and Ms. Nora work together to ensure that that data is seamlessly provided, and with Tim Sculton's help, then we're going to be able to track that information. But in previous years, I know that our former superintendent actually did ask us that question, and the students that were in little school were academically achieving on par with their white peers, and we felt that that was very impressive. So, right now, we can, we're kind of beginning again, so we'll be able to provide that data using the Brigance Assessment.
I'm sorry, what's that assessment?
The Brigance Assessment.
Oh, Brigance.
Yeah, Brigance.
So, I just want to ask a question. This is probably, can you remind me again what the capacity is for the program in totality? How many students?
60 students.
So, that's the max, and that's what you...
For little school, for little school, for the 3-year-olds, that's right.
Okay.
And for playgroup is 30.
And First Steps is?
First Steps is the overall program.
It's the overall program, okay. And I guess, just a general question, maybe, Mary, you might be able to answer. Was there, or maybe, if anybody remembers, was there any discussion about potentially thinking about facilities? What happens at the, at Roosevelt? Is there space potentially for this type of program to come to Roosevelt in that future when, should everything become fully completed and flushed out?
First of all, I want to again give a shout-out to Alita and Mirala for talking about the possibility of having, you know, an expansion of the program in a different way. But to your specific question about Roosevelt, you can have a classroom there that could be adjusted through whatever we needed to do for this. So, yes, the possibility does exist.
That's, that's assuming once the, the central office would move down to Roosevelt, and then there's...
You'd have to accommodate whatever SED, like whatever ground floor classroom has access and in and out.
Sure.
I mean, there are some particulars with it, but yes, there would be space for that.
Okay. And would that help with, I mean, I, we won't know the answer now, but I'm sure at some point, we should probably look at how that would help, because the, the facts and figures point to the fact that these children are given this opportunity, and that they perform at, you know, at par with, with other students. And there is some level of expansion of this to, to really include more children and have that capacity. Is that capacity there at Roosevelt, or what is there, if anything at all?
Well, we'll take a look at it then. Again, we're excited about the possibility of Head Start and taking a look as we, that exact question was one we were talking about actually today during budget meetings. So, yeah.
Thank you.
So, I just have to say how great it is to hear about the First Steps Program, and it's just such an important program in our district. And, you know, Ms. Quelio, as you said, 21 years, and Ms. Nora, I think, you know, you've been, as long as I've been here, you've been there. And it really is something that sets Osning apart. There's like many great things about the district, but this is very close to the top of the list, if it's not the top of the list. And the work, you know, the challenges, and I think the thing to clarify here, too, is the funding for this really comes from federal funds or outside donations, as you see. So, the general fund of the school budget doesn't cover any of these funds at the end of the day. And so, part of the challenge is, how do we basically go? And this is stuff that we've been working on with Albany for years, and the 3K and the, and the Head Start Program. You know, I have to give Ms. Zuber another shout-out for all the work she's done, because these are conversations that have built up over time. And so, it's my hope that this limit that we have, we'll be able to find a way to really expand it out and take advantage of additional federal funds to help support that, because clearly, we have a need. The work is so important. Like, you know, the research behind the brain of an infant to 3-year-old, it's never going to be more active in its lifetime. Certainly more active than mine. But, but I just, the high-quality work that you provide, I can't underscore enough how important it is for the community and for the district, for the work that you're doing. And I just thank you for being here tonight and look forward to what we're able to achieve going forward.
I want to thank the Osning Board, though, because Mirala's salary is included in the school district budget, and that is something the community is... And that is something the community is supporting because it's part of her responsibility too. So there is a contribution from the school district. So thank you for that.
I have to shout out one more brag, if you don't mind, very quickly. So our fantastic Ms. Nancy de la Cruz Arroyo wrote a grant because she saw a need in our community about baby bundles with New York State. And in that grant, she said that we needed 625 baby bundles. And Ms. Nora, with support from different organizations and districts, has distributed 625 baby bundles. And we are so proud of the work that you've done and we are so happy that our families were able to get that extra resource. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
All right, let's move along then and we'll listen to that special education, ENL dual language and federal funds as our presentation. So now you guys are up. Welcome, come take a seat.
Feel free to move the mic down or around, whatever you need.
All right, we're in the hot seat tonight. Good evening, everyone. Board of Education Trustees, Superintendent, and our audience watching in person and at home, we are very excited to present to you this evening. First, I want to acknowledge my colleagues, Jessica Jean Grandy, Assistant Director of Secondary Student Services, and Lindsay McGann, Assistant Director of Elementary Student Services. This work would not be possible without the two of them. Also, as part of our department, we have special, we have special education teachers that we oversee related service providers, psychologists, and our clinical support at 400 that support this work on a daily basis. So it's a small, it's a small task to believe that special education is a small machine when it truly is a large machine happening in this district. So every year, our goal is to enhance services and opportunities for our students through compliance, instructional practices, and engagement. This evening's presentation is framed around data literacy, small group instruction, and equity. And I will begin with our why. So on a daily basis, we ensure that we are utilizing data to identify needs and provide children with the best opportunities that meets the needs of all the learners that are in our classrooms on a daily basis. The New York State Education Department has created the blueprint for improved results for students with disabilities. This was developed in consultation with stakeholders and is consistent with the mission of the NICE Office of Special Education to ensure that students with disabilities have opportunities to benefit from high-quality instruction to reach the same standards as all students and leave schools, and leave school prepared to transition to post-secondary education and living and employment successfully. So this data shows an overview of the students we serve in special education over the last four years. After COVID, we have had an increase in our out-of-district placements, but regionally, there have been an increase throughout the entire region. So before I talk about the out-of-district placements, I would like to give you a full overview. So if you look at 2021, you will see that we had...
Your slide does not shine with that.
Oh, sorry. So in 2021, Nancy, I'm going to promote Nancy to this job right now because I'm going to manage my computer and this, and it will be disastrous. So this is just giving you an overview of the students that we service through, throughout the district. So in 2021, you will see that we had 541 classified students. Four years later, we are in 2023, 2024 school year, we currently have 604 students that are classified. In 20, in 2021, we had 31 students that were out of district and we currently have 52. And our enrollment holistically with students that are currently in district and out of district, we have increased our number from 572 to 656. So we have had an increase in our number of classified students in our district. When you look at our classification rate in 2021, we were at 12.87%, and we are currently at 13.89%. But our enrollment has increased as well. As you can see that these numbers are based on Bed's Day. So this, we take an actual snapshot, which we report to the state in October, was 4,720. And then our total number of students with IUPs that are NCPSC and 504s are currently 970. So we have had an increase with students with disabilities in our district. This slide provides you with an overview of the classification by building. There is an even distribution of classified students throughout the district. As you can see, looking at Park School as an example, out of the total number of students at Park School with the exclusion of pre-K, they have a 12% classification rate. Brookside is currently at 9%, Claremont is at 11%, and Roosevelt is 14, AMD is 13, and Austin High School is at 14%. So we look at this information to help make decisions about programming and where our needs are within each of our buildings.
Kim, also during the, during the presentation, can you also touch on how a student gets classified and at what point, just for, just for reference?
Sure, would you like for us to answer that now or go through?
Yeah, whenever you're ready. I mean, it'd be good for just the general audience to know.
Well, first and foremost, we really depend on the MTSS process. It's really, really important. And I think that Jessica has extensively presented on the importance of MTSS, which is the multi-tiered systems of support. What we should be really doing at the building level is if a teacher is seeing a student that is struggling either academically, behaviorally, or with speech or OT needs, they should be bringing that student to their building level team. At that point in time, they have a meeting and they determine appropriate interventions that they could try at the building. This is all pre-referral and should be occurring because we really want to ensure that we are providing our students with appropriate interventions, that we can, we can ensure and provide data that they potentially, we're hoping that they show success. If the student is showing success with various interventions that are attempted, we should not be moving forward with a referral to special education.
If it's a behavioral type of thing, how does MTSS capture that, just for my...
Well, we utilize our psychologists and our social workers to help support those specific needs. And we also want to say that we are thankful for the support that the Board of Education has given us to expand on those services. So we have had the ability to add additional social workers at each of our elementary buildings. With the exception of Park School, there is a social worker at every grade level in our district. We have added additional psychologists in our district. We have also added, and in the process of adding, an additional substance abuse counselor that will be full-time at OHS and a full-time substance abuse counselor at AMD. So all of these resources, we are hoping to capture any of our struggling students through this process.
We also have three behaviorists at the elementary level that are supporting all of our elementary classrooms. So that has been a significant support to our early elementary in particular, Park School and Brookside, really supporting those behavioral needs to tackle that early on before we see it elevating as the students get older.
And that addition to an additional behavior risk came this year through, obviously thanking each and every one of you for supporting our budget. Does that...
Yes, thank you, yeah. Thank you very much.
Next, slide number seven. So this will give you a classification rate by race, ethnicity, with all grades combined. So when you look at, I just want to expand my screen for myself. Okay. There you go. That's it. Yep. So this is the classification rate by race, ethnicity, and all grades combined. So to highlight this, we really specifically look at if there is a specific race, ethnicity that is overclassified, as well as we look at gender. So one of the highlights, when I'm looking at this particular slide, I can't help that the teacher in me comes out and I want to bring out the red pointer. But when I look at this particular data point, you will see that 21% of our Black students that fall in the ethnicity category and race category that identify as Black are identified or classified as students with a disability. And then when you highlight this lower slide right here, which I apologize that this line is through, you will see that we have a greater percentage of males that, over females, that are classified. So we utilize this data to look at our programming. We look at this to ensure that we are providing appropriate interventions and having dialogue at the buildings around how are we supporting our students. So this slide is going to show you the percentage of total students who are classified in the district and where they're located. So as I mentioned, we had a total of 609 students classified in our district, with the exception of our CPSC students and our out-of-district students. This slide is going to indicate to you where those percentages are located. So at Park, you could see that we have 7% of our total number of classified students that are at Park School. 8%, or I'm sorry, let me go to Brookside, which is at 10%, Claremont, which is at 14%, and Roosevelt, which is at 8%. AMD and OHS have the largest percentage of our classified students, with AMD having 22% and Austin High School having 39%.
Can I just ask one more thing? And maybe you'll address this in the presentation somewhere, but at what point does, I mean, we somewhat got into, but with MTSS now, you can assess a child much earlier than what you were able to do prior to MTSS, right?
So what do you mean by assess?
Like another word, sorry, classify, if need be.
So we, we don't, we don't want to use MTSS as a means to classify a student. We want to use MTSS to capture as many students as possible. So if you, if you recall the triangle that Jessica had shared, we want to capture at least 80% of our students in, in that triangle to ensure that if a child is struggling, that we are giving them the appropriate intervention in the area that they're struggling in to close the gap of where the student is to where we want them to be. So if we are using appropriate interventions, a very small percentage of our students should be referred to special education. That's the reason why MTSS is so critically important. And if my colleagues have anything to add, please do so. Does that, does, and then...
No, I mean, I generally get, I guess I'm trying to get at, if I look at the Austin High School 39% number, I just question that, you know, again, because you guys are all the experts, I'm the guy sitting here at the board table just asking the question. If some, if a child is in need of, you know, special, in special services, you know, for whatever reason, would it be, is there a point in time that, that that child is able to get the support earlier rather than later, so that they're, they're able to keep up with, with their, their peers and with the support that they need or get the, whether it's keep up with the peers or whatever they need, right? Whatever services they need to kind of help them get through with success.
Sure. And that's where, when we implement, when we provide, and I lost my train of thought for a second, when we provide an intervention to address the student's needs, we monitor and we progress monitor that intervention. And we see if that student is making progress. If that child is not making progress, do we need to change that intervention? Or is there something else that is, that needs to be done? After we have attempted interventions for a period of time, if we see a child is not progressing, that is when we would have the dialogue around moving towards a CSC referral.
Okay.
Just to be clear that I'm interpreting this correctly, it looks, at first glance, like the high school's overrepresented, but in reality, there's four grade levels there. And Roosevelt School only has one grade level, so that makes sense for having a smaller piece of the pie, so to speak. And when you look at those percentages of student population, then it looks more equitable across the school. And of course, as students grow, they're, you're only likely to include more and more students in the program. Students don't become undisabled necessarily, right?
Correct. So I'll go back to your enrollment. So when we're looking at Park School, we're looking at approximately 347 students. When you're looking at Brookside School, you're looking at 695 students. Claremont School's enrollment is 648. Roosevelt School is 320. AMD is slightly over 1,000 and OHS has 1,625 students. So you would expect that where you would see a larger enrollment, that your numbers would be higher.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's not so much that I was saying that this represents, you know, the question I was, I was getting at, but this kind of sparked the question that I was going for versus this representing.
And even though MTSS has been part of our system, we have taken a really strong emphasis on the process and streamlining it under Jessica's leadership and working with the building administrators, as well as Dr. Dealey, who supports the MTSS process, and Tim Scholton, who's doing the data piece. So it's, it's now a streamlined process that has a more intentionalized focus. So we are hoping that through the MTSS process, we would not see as many students referred to special education because we should be providing them with as many, as many interventions as possible. So now I'm going to break down data based on school. And because data can be extremely overwhelming, what I wanted to do was really try to show you what each data point is showing and then what are the trends that we are looking at. So if you look right here, this is showing you the classification of students over three years by gender. So you can see in blue are our female students and these are our male students. So this chart is indicating that we have more students classified than are male versus female. If you look at my far right, right in this corner, and I know it's a little bit difficult with the lines that are on the screen, but this is, this is a chart or a data point based on... but this is, this is a chart or a data point based on race and ethnicity. So as you can see, our Hispanic students show a greater number of classified students than any other race. But we also want to take into consideration, we have 70% of our students fall under that category as well. And then this chart is going to show you where are students being classified. So this chart is an indication that a majority of our students at Park School have the classification of speech language impairment followed by autism. So Brookside School. Brookside School is also showing you that we have more males being classified versus females. A great, greater number of students classified in the race and ethnicity category of Hispanic and speech language is the highest classification category followed by autism. Claremont School. We can see that our male students are classified, have the higher classification versus female. Hispanic, once again, is the greater number of students classified in the race ethnicity category. Speech language impairment is the highest classification category with autism and learning disability basically second in both of those classification categories. I sure can.
I just want to make sure I'm following this right. So the bar graph that says classification rate by school and the pie graph, what is the difference between those two? Because I'm, or am I missing something with what those two slides represent individually?
So the pie graph is showing you out of the 609 students, where are the percentages distributed throughout our district?
And so the bar graph is not, that's not what the bar graph is showing that says classification rate by school?
So it's the, when you think about it in terms of mathematics and fractions, which is not my strong suit. But when you're, when you're looking at the pie graph, your bottom number is the total number of students that are classified. When you're looking at the classification rate, we're looking at how many of our total students are classified. So there are two different measures. The classification rate in terms of the 11%, 14% at each school, that's out of all of the students that are enrolled in there, in that school, how many of those students are classified?
There's a discrete number per school.
Yep, those, per school.
And when we look at the pie chart, it's out of our total number of classified students, where are they?
So the same would be, I'm assuming for the, when you break down the classification rate by race ethnicity into grades and the bar graph, the first one, and then the one you were just discussing. So you're going by the, so it's the same concept because when you say the, the number is higher for Hispanic students, you mean the literal number, not necessarily the percentage of that demographic, right? Because that, that bar graph is saying something different.
Correct. It's the number of students versus the percentage of students.
Right.
And this will be just specifically for Park School, not holistically. So the reason why I walk you through each of the schools is so that you could see where the common trends are. So when we go further into our presentation, what we look at in order to determine where is our need. So we know that our data is telling us that if you look at each of the schools by gender, our males are being classified at a higher rate than females. So that's an indication for us of something that we want to take a deeper dive into.
So how would you interpret the classification, the difference between the literal number of classification of the race and ethnicity and the, the percentage wise? Because technically speaking, when you look at the demographics, right? If you're looking at it by demographics, it would kind of switch, right? Where the, it would seem like the black children are 21, 21%.
So the reason why, so that is a red flag for us because if 20, I'm going to go back to that slide. So this, this would be a red flag for us because when we look at the total number of our black students and our classification being at 21%, that is showing that that's an over classification in that subgroup.
Right. That's what I was thinking. I wanted to make sure I follow on that. Thank you.
So that for us is definitely a red flag and something that we, that we begin to look at as a team and looking at where are those classifications coming from? What are the reasons? And begin to problem solve around that. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Kim, just similarly to that, this is, this is the bar graph for me, the one that has like the percentages. Because like, obviously, when you look at a bar graph that has like, oh, we have a high number of Hispanic students enrolled in special education, it makes sense when you consider that the majority of our population is Hispanic, right? Like proportionally, that makes sense. And proportionally, that doesn't make sense. And so that's why that's concerning, right?
Correct. You're absolutely correct.
So, and we have the same, a similar discrepancy between male and females. And I'm just curious, particularly for the gender discrepancy, if you have the ability right now to interpret what's actually happening? If boys are being over diagnosed and girls are being, or are girls being under diagnosed? Is there a way for you to know that?
We have not taken that deep of a dive into it, to be quite honest with you. But it's something going through all of this data. And there's so many ways to look at data, and this is the reason why it's so important. Because this allows us to now really truly dissect. What is the reasoning why we see more males that are being referred to special education in need of services? So it's definitely something that now, now becomes our action plan as we move forward in the school year.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No.
I'm going to disrupt your flow.
No, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Nope, go ahead.
So we do not have a gifted program because, for lots of reasons. And just in researching gifted programs in general, it seems like white children were being classified more as like gifted and black children were being referred to special ed. How are we making sure we don't fall into that same kind of trap?
So this, this is one of the, one of the things that we definitely want to ensure by beginning to really delineate this data out and start really seeing, you know, where are, where are students, especially from particular subgroups, being referred to special education, right? Are we providing them with the correct MTSS process? Are we holding fidelity to the programming that's being provided within the classrooms that they're in? If they are coming to us with a behavioral concern, are we supporting them appropriately through tiered interventions before automatically moving to a CSC referral? Those are all the things that we would ensure that are occurring before we classify a student. This is one of the key reasons why we support and are so intricately involved around following a fidelity to MTSS. Because it is so incredibly important that we exhaust every single opportunity that we could provide a child before saying that a child needs to be classified or moved towards a CSC referral. You don't want to fall in that trap.
I would just be very interested to know what, like, when you do dissect it, what you come up with. It's really intriguing. And I hope this doesn't sound like I think that we are in that trap. It's just, you know, based on trends around the country, it's something I'm curious about.
So I believe I was at Claremont School. So once again, you will see, this is the reason why I noted this as a trend. Because the trend is showing us that we do have, at Claremont School, once again, higher male classification. The number of students classified based on ethnicity is in the category of Hispanic. And then speech language impairment is the highest classification category. And you will begin to see where we have the addition to autism, learning disability, as well as other health impairment, which become other classification categories in which students are at Claremont School. So Roosevelt School. So males, once again, have a higher classification rate. Hispanic has the greater number of students classified. And then you begin to see other classifications come into, come into Roosevelt School. So we have speech language impairment, which is the highest classification and also the reasoning why we support and request additional speech language pathologists in our district. We are looking at the potential because the need seems to be around speech language needs, around adding an additional speech language pathologist that could help address students' needs through the MTSS process, which would allow for building level services at the elementary level, other health impairment, learning disability, as well as autism. Any questions before we move on to small group instruction?
I guess an ask, not a question. I think a lot of questions have been asked by my colleagues. But I, I think when you can put together a timeline just of sort of what your plan is so that we're, as we're going into budget, we can look at, you know, what shifts we might make for next school year at the end of the day. Like, I really appreciate, this is hard work, and I really appreciate all the work that's being done. And, and I think it's always courageous to put your numbers out there and put that out there. And I think, you know, when the data speaks to you and it looks for action, right? We got to look for action. And, and I know we're acting every day within our buildings. And there's longstanding trends, as, you know, as Gomez said, there's longstanding trends across the country with a lot of these numbers. And it's not like we look that different. I think we all want Austin to look different, right? And so, you know, so that's really the ask. And the ask is, what's the assessment? What are the needs and what do we need to look at at budget to maybe move things out? If there is an over referral of, you know, in a particular area, how are we getting to that ahead of time? So that's my loaded question, and I'll leave it at that. It doesn't need to be answered tonight. It's just before budget, we'd like to have the picture.
I'll try to answer for you, Frank, and take this opportunity. So I do think that we need the additional support with AIS supports around the MTSS process to ensure that our students that need AIS services receive the AIS services that they need. I think that that is a critical, critical need in our district. As well as, as well as providing them with appropriate reading interventions that can close, that close the achievement gap. The second thing that I will say is speech and language. We've identified that. And as you could see at the elementary level, it is one of the highest classification categories. We have added speech language pathologist every year since I've been the part of the leadership team of this department because we have identified that as a specific need. But coming towards this budget season, we are looking at the need of having a speech language pathologist to provide building level services to our students that may be struggling, that we feel if they receive those interventions early, they will not end, they will not move towards a referral for speech language services possibly. I do believe that, I think we have built a strong, and I think you'll see through the elementary and the secondary program, we have moved towards great programming. Are we perfect? Are we 100% there yet? No, we're not. But I think we have really addressed through what Lindsay will share with you and Jess will share with you at the elementary and secondary level, how we have utilized this data to intentionally make programming decisions to truly, to truly say that we are meeting the needs of our students that are in our program for special education.
Not for tonight, but a question is, do we have adequate facilities to deliver AIS services across the board?
So our, our biggest struggle is finding the space to provide the services that our students need. The reason why I say that is because when we add additional staff, we have, we can identify the need. We address the need, but to adequately provide the services that students need in an environment that is conducive is a struggle. So for example, we have our related service providers in some, in majority of our schools, two or three therapists sharing a room at one time. That makes it very difficult to have small groups. We have our, our social workers, as well as our psychologists, who want to run additional small groups for our students. That could be a tier two or individual counseling. And it is a struggle because they are sharing space or having to test and somebody else needs to use their room. So it's, that's a struggle. I know students that are receiving resource room. We have had to shift related service providers and give special education teachers what we would consider a quarter of a size of a classroom.
Kim, what would you, I mean, I think your point's well taken in terms of this.
Are you sure? Because I can go on.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, your, your point's well taken on that. I, I would like to know, what do you need? What's needed? I mean, the struggle is, the struggle is, yes, what, what kind of space and what does that look like?
So we, we need office space. We need clinical rooms that, that provide our, our therapists with adequate treatment space with the appropriate equipment that meets our students' needs. We need a sensory room.
Can you come back and quantify what specifically is needed? And I'm, I'm asking this question because of what we're about to embark on very, very shortly. And, and it's happening as we speak to, because if this is a, a need that you have, I mean, it's very clear spaces is an issue. We get it.
Yep.
And what's not clear is what, what does this look like when all said and done for, that would accommodate what is needed? So this way, it's appropriate, it's an environment that's created for these kids to, to be in that, in that place and space along with the, the support that's needed by way of the instructors that are behind us, right? So that's, that's what I'd like to know because the struggle, we all get that. The, the space, we all get that. We, just what, what's not clear is what, can you quantify what that means and what that looks like? And, and don't answer that now. Just think about it.
Well, I have one, right? That's right off the top of my, off the top of my head and the data to show. So as you, as you had seen in the data slides, number one classification was speech language. And I addressed that. Second is autism. With students that are, they have the classification of autism, they have sensory needs. We know that a sensory room that would allow students to have access to various equipment throughout the school day would be superb for our students. They need that. And we don't, we have done the best that we possibly can do in regards to utilizing small spaces in classrooms. But the idea is that I have engaged in conversation with Ms. McGann, who oversees elementary programming. We could provide state of the art opportunities and equipment to address our students' needs with sensory rooms in our buildings.
So that, and if I understand everything correctly, if we, if all of your, what was on the list of, and assume that you have like a wishlist of, here's what we need, you know, to, that's the bare minimum of what we need to kind of support everybody. Would that bring back those kids who we have to pay to send out of district to support, back here to Austin so they can get the support they need here?
So I would have to definitely, we would have to look at those individual students. And to be fair, to give you a fair, a fair approximation of what we would be able to do versus not. But we have seen after COVID, a significant increase with mental health needs. but we have seen after COVID, a significant increase with mental health needs, and significant mental health needs, which have elevated our numbers of out-of-district placements. So to be fair, we would have to really look at what we would, with the additional wish list, and what we would be able to bring back to our district with those specific things being implemented and provided.
So that would be great, because I think it'd be great to know that. I mean, just, I think there's, right now, we're kind of operating with conceptual stuff right now that hasn't been completely designated anywhere and everywhere. We have some ideas, but this is a need. And this need here needs to be drawn out as to what it is, because we can say struggle, you can say space issues, that's clear. What that space issue is, what's needed, bring everybody, bring them back here. We don't have to pay to send them outside of the district. Let's have that conversation.
And looking at, and being able to provide our students with the interventions that they need appropriately, which would impact the number of students that are referred to special education and classification rate is huge. So it's, yes, the special ed piece, but I cannot say enough and emphasize enough around the general education piece. Because the more we do on that side, it prohibits students being referred to special education. So it is, if we do what needs to be done on their general education side, providing our students with appropriate interventions, giving them appropriate space where they grow, I do believe that our referral rates of special education would significantly decrease.
That's, that's, that point should be your exclamation point right there.
Yeah, and just building off that, Roger, I think you're referring to the capital plan, the facilities plan. As you know, that's five, six, seven, eight years off. So I would just add on that, what do you need in 2020? What do you need a day? But in theory, as we go into budget season, maybe Mary and team are already looking at this, what can we do next year? The year after that, the year after that, year after that, prior to any shovels going into the ground, which, and buildings and things being not done for five, six, seven, eight years? If this is a priority for the district, and it feels to me should be, because you got to prioritize everything, what can we do literally tomorrow, but if not tomorrow, starting with next year as we go into the budget cycle?
From a tiered perspective, right? Because there are multiple things going on here. You heard from, and you'll hear from Jessica and Lindsay about this too, fidelity of implementation of MTSS, of math in focus, of ARC reading are critical ingredients to address the classification rate. So it's the deliberate, significant fidelity of implementation towards that, looking at regular data, looking at progress monitoring, how we're addressing that. That's a big culture shift in this district. So again, from that level of perspective, it's super important. The next piece would be, I think many of you remember, look at the largest classification rate, speech and language. I've got speech therapists delivering services in a shared room with other people. So we're trying the best, the out-of-the-box solutions about carving out more spaces. I mean, this is part of our regular conversation that's going on right now. So I so appreciate the question because it just highlights how important this work is to us. So we always, we meet once a week as a cabinet, and we go, end up back, him is a key member of that, we go back to what does really great, important instruction look like in the gen-ed classroom? Because every piece of research tells you that that is critical to lowering your classification rate. This district embarked upon an implementation for ARC, adopted MTSS, fidelity to those two procedures will really make an impact.
I apologize for the interruption. I just want to say that while we're talking about getting ahead of this through general ed and making sure we're not over-classifying students, and that is something I totally agree with, I just wanted to be clear for anyone watching at home maybe, that having a disability is not a bad thing, and not every disability can be prevented from general education. So I just want to, I feel like, you know, there's a lot of stigma around it, and we're kind of going down a one-sided conversation, and it is never a bad thing to get your child the support they need. And I always talk about it as like a stepstool. If you're too short to reach something, you get a stepstool. It's not always permanent, and just wanted to say that piece.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I hope that you can see in the next part of our presentation, I don't want anybody here to midnight, but I'm hoping that the next part of our presentation, you can see the programming that we have developed as a team over the last three years being together. It has grown tremendously, and this is where we, that we do pride ourselves in the work that is being done to address student needs when a student is classified, and they do have the need for those additional supports and programming to really meet their needs.
If you look at the capital, I mean, the bond schedule, the latest is Roosevelt coming on at 2029, so it's not eight years. It's a progress, but it's not eight years, especially if we stick to the March date.
So, here we go, it's a small group instruction. Stop me anytime, but remember, I don't want to keep you here to midnight. So, small group instruction is a key component of student learning. In special education, we address small group within our continuum of services. My colleague, Ms. McGann, will share what instruction looks like at each level of service at the elementary level. So I'm going to hand over the wand to Ms. McGann.
No pressure for me to go quickly. Okay, so first, I want to start off by sharing that I have the honor and privilege of working with all of our elementary students, and the best students in the district, in my opinion. I am so grateful to be a part of the elementary team, working with our providers, working with our teachers and our building leaders. We just highlighted some areas of difficulty, and so I want to just shout out our providers who are working in these tight spaces and who are figuring it out for our children every single day, no matter how challenging it can be. I have opened my own office for people to come over and work in my office and have CSE meetings in my office. Jessica has done the same, Kim has done the same. There's nothing like having a CSE meeting in the assistant superintendent's office, but this is what we're doing for our students and for our families. So, big shout out to all of our teachers, not just elementary, all of our teachers, all of our providers, who are doing that on a daily basis for our students. Tonight, I want to highlight just our continuum of services, starting with our least restrictive support, which is our integrated co-teaching program. At the elementary level, we have integrated co-teaching in our kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade school buildings, excuse me. Our integrated co-teaching is a classroom that has a general education teacher and a special education teacher both working for our students throughout the school day. Here in Austin, we do that all day long to hit all four core subjects, ELA, math, science, social studies. That's not common for every district. So it's something to highlight and celebrate here in Austin, that we do provide that special education support throughout the school day for our students. It's a great honor to be able to have that here. In addition to that, Austin also provides a teaching assistant at the elementary level, also not common in districts in our area. So we have three adults in our integrated co-teaching settings throughout the entire school day to support our students. In an integrated setting, we look to have no more than 12 students who are receiving some level of support. We really work hard with our building leaders to ensure that students that are in an integrated co-teaching classroom really do need the service of the special education teacher throughout the day. So we're not looking really to put students who have maybe a speech-only recommendation into an ICT classroom. We're really looking for those students who need that access to the special education teacher throughout the day. We also look to keep our numbers much lower than that 12 mark. So in general, when we're looking at the ratio or the percentage of students, the idea is that we would always have more general education students than special education students in our classroom. However, again, here we look for those natural proportions. We're looking for much lower proportion of students with disabilities versus their same-age general education peers in our integrated settings. When we go into these classrooms to support small group instruction, we're looking at the six co-teaching models. So if you look up here, you can see the teacher is represented by the oval, and the students are represented by the circles. As I mentioned, in Austin, we have the addition of a teaching assistant, so we can add another oval to every single one of these co-teach models, because that oval is represented as another instructor in the classroom. So this helps really support and foster that small group instruction that we're looking for across all of our programming. As we move into more, a little bit more restrictive, there's a little bit of dialogue around whether or not resource room is more restrictive or equal to a co-teaching, or if it's less restrictive than co-teaching. When we look at the access to the special education teacher, technically, this is less access to a special education teacher. The resource room model is a pull-out service at the elementary level, so students are pulled out of their general education classrooms, and they're supported by a special education teacher in a small group of no more than five students. The resource room is 180 minutes per week, so depending on the student's schedule and what other services they have, we really work hard to make the schedule work and benefit the student as much as we can. We want them in for core instruction, so we're looking to make sure if they have resource room and speech-language therapy, that neither one of those is conflicting with tier-one instruction. So some of our students are in resource room for five days a week for 36 minutes, and other students are in resource room for four days a week for 45 minutes. It's very tough at the elementary level to get creative with scheduling, because we're kind of stuck on like when lunches and when specials are, versus the secondary where they have a little bit more flexibility with periods. So that is the most creative that we've been able to get, but we're always looking at other opportunities to make sure our students are, again, are not missing their instruction. The resource room model is not meant to replace core instruction, it's meant to supplement it and to support students, again, in that smaller environment that's pulled out from their general education setting. Next on the continuum are our special classes, and this is what, we really worked very hard over the last couple of years at elementary to look at our special class sections and really look at the projections of our students and where their needs are, and what it is that they're telling us that they need. So in September of 2022, we added a 15-1 program that was meant to feed up to our either CALP program or our departmental program at the secondary level. So this is a program that had never been at the elementary level. We had the option of really a 12. It was a 12-1-1. So we redesigned the elementary special classes. We made a 12-1-3. We made our 8-1-3, which is our RISE program. I'll talk a little bit more about that in more detail. And then we created this 15-1 section only at Roosevelt School in September of 2022. This allowed for us to bring students, the pace of an ICT classroom to a different level for students who needed just a little bit more, but didn't need as much support as what the 12 was offering. They also didn't need the additional support of the three teaching assistants that were in the 12. So this was a specific group of students that we created a program for. The communication with our teachers, with our related service providers, from me and through Kim, was we want to build programs for our students, we don't want to fit students into programs that we have already. And that's where the 15-1 was developed. This year, September of 2023, we added another 15-1 section at fourth grade. So we have a fourth-grade 15-1 that feeds into our fifth-grade 15-1 that will eventually feed up into our secondary program. There is not a plan right now to go lower than fourth grade, because we're really, we want to keep our kids, if they're kind of in that borderline, we're really looking for that least restrictive environment. We want to keep them in ICT as much as we can. So we're looking at four and five, kind of keeping that 15-1 if the need is there, and then moving into, again, departmental or potentially CALP if they need something more when they get to secondary. Okay, so when we're, again, when we're looking at the difference between our programming, our ICT and our resource room are going to be our less restrictive programs, those are general education programs, meaning that students are sitting in general education classes with their gen-ed peers versus our special classes, our 15, our 12, and our RISE program, those are going to be our more restrictive programs. They are designed for students solely with disabilities. We do have opportunities for them to integrate with same-age peers, but their core instruction is meant to be in their classroom solely for students with disabilities.
Any questions before we?
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you talk to me about how these different settings coexist with the departmental model that we just started this year in fourth grade at Claremont and have implemented a few years ago at Roosevelt? So are there co-talk classrooms? Do those kids switch like everybody else?
They do, they do. It's so exciting. So lots of planning, and actually, the departmental model at both Claremont in fourth grade and Roosevelt in fifth grade has allowed us to do more of hybrid programming, where we have, which is more comparable to secondary, where we have students who are maybe in ICT math, but then they need self-contained ELA. Super cool, super exciting, and lots of planning. So it is very much on an individualized basis. It took a lot of coordination with Ms. Shanzey and Dr. Nova last year to be able to align teams so that when we had those hybrid programs, that our kids were not feeling that, right? We might have been feeling it as adults, but our kids weren't feeling it. And they knew, they were just going to their classes like everybody else is going to their classes, but they are switching. Our 15s are a little bit different. They're switching at Claremont School, they're switching for science and social studies. At Roosevelt, it was a little bit too more aligned with ELA that we needed to kind of keep them in the 15. So it looks a little bit different at Roosevelt, but we're constantly looking at scheduling and looking at how to develop that.
Thank you.
And this, and this really important. Lindsay and I have had many conversations about the 15-1, and giving students the opportunity where they have a strong subject area, to give them the opportunity to go into the integrated co-teaching classroom, and they did a fabulous job under Lindsay's leadership to make that happen. But it's really coming down to giving students exactly what they need in the areas that they specifically needed in.
Before we jump in, I just wanted to highlight one other thing that we were able to do at Roosevelt School, is really get student voice into a lot of this planning. And last year, we had one-third of our student population attend their own annual review meetings and give input into what they wanted as they were moving forward into AMD. So that was a huge success for us. One-third for me is not enough. I want 100%. I want all of our kids, 100% of our kids were invited, and there was a lot of parent conversation around that. There was a lot of work, so shout out to our psychologists who supported that as well. We had letters for the children, they got their own invitation, so they were invited to their CSE meetings. They came, they spoke to us, they told us things that they wanted, things that they didn't want. So their voices are really being heard, and they're helping so much with our planning, and we're hearing directly from them. So we intend to continue that into this year again and grow that number. I hope that I get to report out next year that we are well beyond one-third.
Okay, so we're back to a little bit of data. So the one thing that we really wanted to emphasize is all students receiving instruction, all students that are receiving instruction in 15-1 classroom settings, 12-1-3 classroom settings, and integrated co-teaching, they are receiving our core curriculum in reading and in math. So it is really important that our students are having exposure and participating in grade-level curriculum that their general education peers are having access to as well. So our students in grades K through eight have taken the fall ERLA. This data slide really shows you out of the 277 students where our classified students fell. So out of the 277 students, 54% of them are in the emergency level, 32% of our students are at the at-risk, and 13% are at the proficient or above. So we're utilizing this as a baseline data for ourselves, because when the ERLA is re-administered, we'll go back and we'll see where students have shown growth in the areas in which they were assessed. So this is our fall math growth in reading. So this is administered for students So this is administered for students in grades K through grade 11. So 474 classified students did participate in the fall MAP growth in reading. And as you can see, 59% fell in the low range, 21% in the low average, 11% in the average, and then 6% in the high average, three in the high. So once again, this is all of our baseline data that we'll be utilizing in order to see how our programs are meeting our students' needs and our students are growing. And then these are the results of the fall MAP. And this, once again, is administered to students in grades K through grade 11, and 63%, 63% fell in the low range, and going to the higher range is 3%. So math is definitely an area that we are looking at as well.
Kim, I got a question about the, these three slides. So the ERLA, right, that's the ARC testing, and then we have the MAP, which is, we'll call independent of that. I mean, is this, are those tests good indicators of proficiency for students who are classified? I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, are those, no, those the right indicators to line up proficiency because they may not, those testing, the ERLA and the MAP, may not be geared for students who are classified? Is that, is that accurate?
So we're going to expect that our students that are, that are classified will score lower on these assessments. We want to see if our students are showing incremental growth. So based on the assessments that are being provided, do we see that our students having access to that general education curriculum, are they growing? So, you know, that's what's really important to us so that we can ensure that we are closing the achievement gap with our students through that incremental growth and exposure to the programming.
Okay. So what you're saying, it's not a surprise that you're seeing the difference?
Correct.
Okay. And does this look similar for the New York State testing for three to eight as well?
It does, to be honest with you. There are similarities in regards to our students that are scoring a one or a two and some students scoring a three, but a majority of the students falling within the two, with the one, two, with the levels. And that would be a direct correlation on how students are doing with the ERLA and the NWEA.
I have another question. When you say classified, are you talking about every single child who has an IEP or a 504, or are you talking about just those children with an IEP or a 504 that are in these like ICT, the resource rooms, that kind of thing?
Just IEP.
Okay.
This is not including your 504 students.
Okay. So these classified students could also be in general ed?
That is correct.
Did you?
These are, these are student, well, these are students that are in an integrated co-teaching setting of 15-1 or 12-1-3. Lindsay's going to talk about the programming that we use for our 8-1-3 students.
Okay. So this does, sorry, I'm trying to understand. This does include children with an IEP in general ed or it does not?
So students that are in an integrated co-teaching setting are with their general education peers. The program that Lindsay had spoken about with the 15-1, some of the students, well, majority of the students do go into an integrated co-teaching classroom for at least two subject areas. So they have a hybrid, they have a hybrid schedule. And then students that are in a 12-1-3 are with classified students throughout the day.
I don't think I'm asking my question the right way. I'm sorry.
She's, she's asking, I think that she's asking, are all of the students who are classified, no matter what their school setting is, their classroom setting is, are there, is that data reflected in these charts about math and ERLA?
Yes, with the exception of the 8-1-3.
Okay. So a child who has an IEP but is not in ICT and is just in straight general ed there in this?
Like a student with speech only, for example?
Yeah, or like PT only or whatever it is. Does it require or doesn't qualify for that?
Yes, it would.
So it includes that in here?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have, do you look like yourselves, because I assume that sharing that with us might get into some kind of legal issues. Do you look further into that to kind of identify where those highest needs are? Or is it just, because you know, classified is such a broad thing, even like the same disability could affect two different children in such different ways?
We can see it by, we can see it by classroom. So we can break the data down by the specific classrooms, and then you can see it by student as well. So yes, we do, we can see a much deeper picture than, than what we're seeing here.
Correct. And when we look at it by student name, once the test, or once the assessment is administered through time, we're able to make a comparison. So this, of course, is baseline data because this, this was administered in the fall. So when it's re-administered, we'll be going in and checking to see where our students fell once again and then making the determination as to if they have shown, you know, shown growth.
So I guess back to circling to Rob's comment, this could be appropriate testing for some children. It's just going to be like very individualized on whether the testing is appropriate or not.
Yep.
So outside of our children who we were just speaking about, we have our, our RISE program, which is our 8-1-3 program. I'm saying outside meaning that they're not included in that data. So our RISE program was created in September of 2022. We opened six RISE classrooms, and that was across all of our buildings with the exception of OHS. This year, currently, we have eight RISE classrooms, again, with the exception of OHS. So in all of our buildings, there are two at Park School, there are two at Brookside School, there are two at Claremont School, and there is one at Roosevelt and one at AMD. Most of them are single graded, but we do have a couple that are multi-graded, so two grade levels. The RISE program uses the TeachTown curriculum. It's a standards-based adapted core curriculum that really focuses in on the methodology of applied behavior analysis. And so there is that ABA approach that comes along with the program. And so we have a board-certified behavior analyst who oversees the work that's done in the RISE program. She is looking at the data with, along with me, that we're receiving from our TeachTown curriculum. We're, we're monitoring that with our teachers. So we are only in our second year of TeachTown. We're still in the learning process, in the learning phase, but I'm super excited to share a little bit of data with you. I'm not going to share my videos, although I do encourage you to watch them. The first one gets more in-depth about the RISE program, and the second one is current pictures from September through November. So if we look up here at this, this point of data, this is our overall data. It didn't let me capture without August. So if I just take August out of the numbers, it's telling us from September to November that 1,416 concepts have been covered. It's a huge number, and it's because it's all individualized. So when we think about our students in this program, every point of data that we're collecting is based on the individual student, and that's what gives us that really large number. Of those concepts, 233 have been mastered between September and November. So huge celebration for our teachers and for our students. That's a lot of growth and a lot of learning in a very short period of time. So again, I can't wait to celebrate with everyone next year to give a full-year profile of how many mastered lessons we've had. We're really excited about this and proud of our students, again, proud of, proud of the staff that's working with this group of learners and the related service providers. So I'm just going to share a little bit more about what the program looks like. We have, when we're, when we're talking about small group instruction, we're bringing in our related service providers to support with that small group instruction, where we have a collaborative model. Our occupational therapists and our speech-language therapists are pushing into the classrooms, and that's happening one-time weekly, where they're sharing strategies, they're working through the TeachTown curriculum on things like cooking, focusing in on vocabulary, preloading vocabulary, and our occupational therapists working on fine motor skills and development, measurement skills, lots of different things going on. Also incorporating some of the sensory-based activities that we are so fortunate to have. We, we did a large purchase of sensory tools last school year, and so our occupational therapists are coming into those classrooms and they're working with our teachers and our teaching assistants who do beautiful work with our children to integrate and work on preventative skills and strategies so that we can keep our students in district. So we're really, again, those are those preventative strategies that you were mentioning before and talking about. These are things that we're doing ahead of the curve, trying to keep up with what our students are showing us that they need. So we have, in addition, we have our BCBI, our board-certified behavior analyst, who's pushing into our classrooms. It's, it's written as one-time weekly, but she's never not in the classrooms, so whatever that equals is how much she's in there. But she is one person spread across eight classrooms. So, so it's, the, the support is there and, and the energy is certainly there, and she's doing a great job working with all of our teachers in all of our classes. But this too helps bring in that small group instruction where we're talking about social-emotional supports and behavioral supports and what that looks like in, in this setting. So just going forward, the goals for RISE look a little bit different, although still aligned with our district goals and on our mission and our vision. This year, our, our biggest push was for our buddy classes, so we're looking for those opportunities to integrate. And how can we do that for students who are self-contained throughout the day? How can we make the school day meaningful for them and, and really showcase the work that's being done in our RISE program? And so that was through buddy classes. And I would love to just, it's like a very quick, I promise. I don't know if I can, can I click on that? Can we click on that? If we can click on buddy class. So I'll just set this stage really quickly. This is a student who uses a communication device and her, oh, we need access, sorry, guys. Okay. So, so if I could have shown you, it's a student who uses a communication device and three of her buddy class peers come into her classroom, and they are using her communication device to talk to her and ask her a question, and then they wait for her response on the communication device. It's beautiful, and I will get that to work so that all of you can see it because the students who were coming in from the buddy class were so excited to be able to communicate with their peer and vice versa. So these are things that are happening every single day. I could send a video every day of the success of our buddy classes and the work that's being done with our general education partners. So I just want to, I want to thank our general education partners. I want to thank the building leaders for supporting this huge goal that came to fruition right at the beginning of the school year. Our students in the RISE program are having lunch with their buddy classes. They are, they went apple picking with their buddy classes at Brookside School. There was a celebration at Claremont School. There are so many things going on every single day to really promote the inclusivity and the work together and the collaboration between general education and special education. So it's really beautiful to see. I encourage you to step into our, our RISE classrooms and be able to see that firsthand. Other goals for RISE is our homeschool connection. So one thing that's really challenging is that a lot of the TeachTown curriculum is on an online platform. So even though our teachers are teaching in face-to-face, a lot of the work product, because it's collecting data, is on the computer. So we really wanted to work this year to build a homeschool connection. So we did that through our current events. There's a current event that TeachTown pushes out regularly, and that current event is something real, it's happening in the world, and it's something that allows our families to connect with what's going on in the classroom. So we're doing the work in the classroom and then bringing it into the home setting so that we can build that connection with our families. Our TeachTown data was printed for families during the November parent-teacher conferences and shared out with them. So again, it is computer-based, so we printed that, and all of the families were able to go home with that point of data. So those big numbers that I shared with you, they got individually for each of their children. The other thing that we're really making sure that we continue is the professional development. So we actually, Kim and Jessica and I are hoping to get to the Bronx soon. There's a school that is implementing TeachTown, and that they're in their third year, so they're one year ahead of us. So we're hoping to get down there to be able to see that implementation in person. We've also been asked if we would be willing for people from BOCES to come to see our teachers teaching TeachTown. So I, we're not quite there yet, but we're, we're hoping to open our doors to allow for that collaboration as well with our local BOCES because TeachTown is something that's coming into their programming as well. So professional development is ongoing. We work with our TeachTown liaisons, and we're, we're hoping to get them back in the spring to kind of give us an update on where they think that we're at based on our implementation. And then finally, all of our students are going to be evaluated this year using the assessment of basic language and learning. It's known as the ABLES, and that will give us that, again, that baseline to talk through at annual reviews. And then each year, we'll go back through and do the ABLES again, and we'll get more and more information. It is, it is not the brigands, but it is similar in a sense that you're building upon the skill consistently. So like Mirlo was talking about earlier, we're building on that, and we'll, we'll be able to see and keep track of how the students are performing, more to their level, to your point, like where are they based upon themselves. So lots of new things coming. We're very excited, very proud of the program, and very grateful to our board for supporting the program's implementation.
So believe it or not, that's just elementary. Does anybody have any questions before I just turn it over to Jessica? I'm going to do a really quick overview of the data for secondary, and Jessica will begin secondary programming that we offer at AMD and OHS. No questions? So we did the same breakdown at AMD and OHS, and as you can see, that there's a similarity in our trends. Once again, we are seeing the classification of males, our Hispanic, our students that fall in the race ethnicity of Hispanic category have the greater, have the greatest number of classification. And then when you look at AMD in regards to the classification category, students fall in learning disability, speech-language impairment, and OHI. Asning High School is where you see, once again, males as well as the classification category of a learning disability, which is the highest, followed by other health impairment and speech-language impairment. We share this, we share this data with you so that it's a springboard for Jessica to explain why we chose the programming that we have chosen at the secondary level to address our students' needs.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So at the secondary level, you know, much like at the elementary level, we, our programs, our various programs of support are, is the method that we use to support small group instruction. Ms. McGann gave you a really nice overview of a number of these programs, so I'm really going to focus on the things that are different at the secondary level. So here you'll see attendance levels in terms of our, our district-wide attendance. So in terms of our students that are classified, 57% of our students have satisfactory attendance, but 42% of our students have some level of attendance concern, whether it's at-risk, moderately, moderate absentee concerns, or severely chronically absent. This has been an ongoing conversation, especially at the secondary level, and is an ongoing conversation in the region and really across the nation, especially post-COVID. And as such, one of the new programs that we have implemented this school year is our LINKS program. So our LINKS program is a similar program to, a number of districts in the region have similar programs to support students who are struggling with school attendance, school avoidance, or absenteeism. The goal of the program is that it is not a placement. So this is not a special education placement. This is not a program where students attend long-term. It's meant to be a tier-three support. Students who are classified and not classified have access to the program. It is, the goal of the program is transition, not containment. The student-teacher of record maintains a connection and maintains the responsibility of supporting the student's educational needs. But we do have a teacher and a school psychologist, a bilingual school psychologist, who supports students in a dedicated space in the building to help those students re-enter the school building, build connections with their teachers, feel welcomed and safe in the environment, and resume their and resume their regularly scheduled day. Teachers in the building are welcomed and invited to come down and see students in the program. When students are successful in attending certain classes, they are encouraged and permitted to do so, but in spaces where they might need a space that's separate and quiet and not the general education setting, this is a space that students are provided. The space is dedicated. We have a dedicated classroom. It is near the main entrance of the school building. We often hear students who struggle to return to school state things like, well, I don't know what to say when everybody sees me come in. What am I supposed to say when my friends ask me where I've been? So we have, we really put thought and care into where the space was located so students didn't have to travel through the building and have that anxiety in regards to getting to their space. We review student progress in six-week cycles in terms of whether students are making progress, are we seeing that students are re-entering their regularly scheduled day, or is there additional intervention that is warranted or necessary for the students? But it provides us that, that data and that background and that intervention to try and again, build those connections back into the school building. Our goal is to target those school-avoidant students. We provide counseling within the program as needed. Academic support is provided as needed. And again, we really work to connect the students with their house teams. At OHS, there is a house model where there is a school social worker, dedicated school counselors, a school psychologist, and an AP assigned to each house. So the goal in LINKS is to connect those students and introduce them to the resources that exist within their house so that way they can transition from the support of the LINKS program to the support of the house and resume their, again, resume their regularly scheduled day, which is always the goal. So that's been a really great addition to our high school programming this school year. And another addition to our program at the high school this school year is our, expanding our Unified Electives program. You can think of this as the buddy classes of high school. We don't call them buddy classes at high school. But the goal of our unified, so the high school has had a unified PE program, a unified physical education program, where our students with disabilities integrate into a general education PE program. But we really thought to take it to the next level and we think it's really important that general education students and all students are encouraged to participate and encourage inclusivity within the building. So many of the students that are engaged in our Unified Electives programs are from our more specialized programs such as CALP and Project Thrive, which I'll talk about in a moment. But this year, we have added Piano I, Piano II, and Dance. And general education students choose to participate in this program. And those general education students who choose to participate in this program will also be furnished a letter that says that they were, that they opted to participate in the Unified Electives program, right? So for those of you who have students that are in high school and they're looking to apply to colleges and trying to build their resume and trying to build experiences, explore whether they want to work in special education, this is a really great opportunity to provide that within, within the regular program of service, work towards their graduation requirements, but also get some additional experience as well. So students will be furnished with a letter, general education students will be furnished with a letter stating which Unified Elective programs they have participated in.
What are some of the most popular ones that are?
So we, we all.
I mean, I'm just curious, like what are some of the things that are there that students are more interested in and what else might there be interest in?
That's a great question. So right now, it's limited to PE, Piano I, Piano II, and Dance. Those are the only Unified Electives that we have at the moment.
Is it any dance? I'm just curious.
Is there any dance?
I mean, is it just like, is it ballet?
It's the, it's the, there's a dance class at the high school, so that's, that's, that's the course. But we are looking, to your point, we are having conversations about expanding that beyond the cultural arts, right? There are other electives that are offered at the high school level that are under math or under, you know, the sciences or under the humanities domains. And we really want to take a look at some of those. We want to work with our department leaders and identify other spaces in which we can grow our Unified Elective program and provide our students additional opportunities.
I think this comes right back to the space needs to do it.
Well, the good news is, is that we're tapping into courses that already exist and classes that already exist. And we're talking about adding a handful more students into those sections. So, you know, when we're talking about, this is a way to be creative, to provide those inclusive opportunities without necessarily needing more classroom space because we're tapping into courses and, and classes that already exist. And we're talking about a small number of students joining that program and joining those classes.
But for the limited selection that you have now, for what you're gonna look to expand and offer in the future?
Yep.
You'll need the space.
We will, sure, yes, we always need the space. Yes. So again, on that note, we are always talking to our students. You know, students drive instruction, as Ms. McGann said in her, in her part of the presentation. We are building programs around students' needs as opposed to fitting students into programs that exist. So we have many conversations with school counselors and with teachers and with students around what students are interested in, what they need, what they're pursuing, what their goals are. And over, in those conversations, in the last two years or three years, we've added three new courses to our special education programming. So these are all the courses that are offered in ICT, departmental, and other support courses at the high school. We added, in 2223, we added integrated co-teaching for SUNY English 12. And we did attempt to get an ICT, SUNY English 11 last year, but it was collapsed due to low enrollment. But, you know, we are always having those conversations about what do the students want and how can we add courses to support their needs.
Do you think there's the opportunity in the future to, for like, any kind of trades courses that could be integrated into here?
Yeah, so I'm gonna come, I'm gonna talk about trades and how we access trade support in a few minutes. So we've also added environmental science and new, this year, we added the integrated co-teaching for chemistry. We have many students who pursue career in technical education and the medical, in the medical programs that exist. And so if students have a goal to become a nurse or to go into a healthcare-related field, chemistry was an ongoing conversation. So while it is, there's not necessarily a Regents exam that students are required to take for the course, there's a lot of interest and need for that course for other reasons. And so we added it to our program for this school year. We also, in our skills and our resource room, one of the big changes that we brought to the, we brought to the program was the curriculum and resource that we're using within the programs. So many of the conversations that we have at the secondary level are that, especially post-COVID, the things that students are struggling with is executive functioning, executive function skills, right? How to take notes, how to manage your day, how to plan to complete all of the work that you need to do, do it in a timely fashion, balance the things that you want to do with the things that you have to do, right? And so we have brought in the SMARTS Executive Function Curriculum for our skills teachers and our resource room teachers to utilize. This program provides 40 executive function lessons and resources that focus on learning surveys so students can understand themselves better as learners and what they need, where their strengths and weaknesses are. Lessons around goal-setting and flexible thinking, how to organize and prioritize information, how to organize and prioritize time, and different strategies to improve Our departmental program is our 15-1 program. It is courses that are offered to ensure students meet their graduation requirements. Students, students with disabilities are enrolled until either graduation requirements are met or the day before their 22nd birthday. So to your point about, you know, career in technical education and work in the trades, some students have to pursue a career development in Occupational Studies pathway in which we partner with BOSI's where students will attend a career in technical education program. And in that case, they're awarded a CEDAS, which is, which essentially provides an employability certificate for the student. The New York State graduation pathways allow for one Regents exam to be replaced by that CEDAS. So it provides a nice opportunity for students who are, who are looking to extend into the trades to get that experience in order to earn their Regents or their local diploma. Our CALP program is our cognitive, academic, and language proficiency program. So this is a 12-1-1 program that really supports that career in technical education, but while students are pursuing their, their diploma, their Regents or their local diploma goals. So we have English skills, CEDAS, and math skills programs that support the 15-1 content area courses. So students are integrated into the 15-1 setting and participate in the 12-1-1 setting to provide additional reteaching and pre-teaching of skills. But students attend 15-1 for things like English and algebra, global living environment. Generally, students are enrolled in fewer of those courses at one time. So for the, for many of our students, where they're expected to spend more than four years at the high school in order to meet their graduation requirements. Some of our Project Thrive students who are alternately-assessed students will integrate into the 12-1-1 courses and have that opportunity for enrichment. And students are enrolled until their graduation requirements are met or until the day before their 22nd birthday. The majority of the students in our CALP program are pursuing a CEDAS pathway to graduation, which is that four Regents exams plus the CEDAS, the employability profile. Project Thrive is our, is formerly known as Life Skills. It is our self-contained New York State alternately-assessed program. So it is a 12-1-2, no more than 12 students with one teacher and two teaching assistants. We only enroll students who are alternately-assessed in this program. Students are enrolled until the day before their 22nd birthday or until they can exit into an adult program. Students exit with a skills commencement credential and we provide vocational opportunities during their stay. So from the ages of 14 to 16, we're mostly working on pre-vocational opportunities within the building. There are things like we have coffee carts, we have laundry facilities and a kitchen within the program so students can practice some of those pre-vocational skills in the building. And at the age of 16 or over, our teachers work really hard to build community partnerships and partnerships with neighboring districts to provide more community-based vocational opportunities. They budget, they go shopping, they come back, they cook, they do their laundry, they practice job skills, they volunteer. There's many opportunities that they have in the community to build those skills.
But if we had additional space, we would love to build an apartment.
We want an apartment.
We would.
We do want an apartment.
It would be ideal. It really would, especially since the state has changed the age of keeping our students to the age of 22. It would be a fabulous addition.
They can do laundry and they cook, but they can't make their bed, they can't vacuum. So those would all be things that we could do if we had an apartment, so.
Would there be any, like, potential for thought around home economics as also another piece to offer?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So all of this to lead to our ultimate goal of secondary programming is graduation and we have many conversations around graduation rates. For this conversation, I'm gonna focus on our 2016 cohort because that's the year in which we have the start-to-finish, the start-to-finish data, right? So when, generally, graduation rates are reported as a four-year cohort, but for our students with disabilities, as I described, many of our students need more than four years to meet their graduation requirements and we want to provide those opportunities. And so as you can see from this 2016 cohort data, 64% of our students with disabilities graduate from high school within four years. When we move to five years, 81% of our students with disabilities have graduated and by six years, 84% of our students have graduated. It's also important to note that between, you know, the improvement and the change between 2014 and 2016, in 2014, our six-year cohort graduation rate was 67% and in 2016, our six-year graduation cohort rate was 84%. So we've seen a nice improvement there.
And we have seen a significant improvement in the four-year cohort. And I do wanna compliment Jess, who has been working so closely with the administration at the high school and ensuring that so many of these opportunities are being provided, which ultimately does impact the four-year graduation rate, which is now 76%. So our last piece of our presentation is equity. So we just broke it up into really quick highlights. So really, in special education, we want to provide equitable resources to our students. And some of the ways that we had the opportunity to do that is providing our students with access to the grade-level curriculum, expanding integrated co-teaching opportunities, as Jessica has mentioned, and Lindsay. Before and after-school programs, we have budgeted to allow our students that needed additional assistance with teaching assistance to participate in any before and after-school programs. The buddy classrooms, the unified clubs, unified electives, the Pioneers League, providing all brand-new iPads to our RISE program, as well as working very closely with the director of Multilingual to coordinate services for our ENL service, for ENL students. So I just wanna highlight this slide very quickly because we do have students that are flagged both, students with a disability and with limited English proficiency. So we thought it was really important for us to show you what those numbers look like by grade level. So this gives you an overview of grade K through 12. The numbers represent the total number of students at that particular grade level that are flagged as a student with a disability and limited English proficiency. And our highest number is at Claremont School. What does this mean for you? Because coming forth with budget season, we have had some really great conversation around the possibility of adding an integrated co-teaching dual-language section to provide our students with an opportunity that fall within this category. And then, this is just a quick comparison of our dual-enrollment students by grade level, both L and classified. As you can see, our greatest number is at the fourth grade. As well, as well as second grade. So this would be an area that Nancy and I and our team would be looking at to see where would be the most appropriate building and grade level that we would add this opportunity for a dual-language integrated co-teaching section. And lastly, how do we provide equity among our staff? We have partnered with Jessica Turner to provide training in Morey and Gillingham to our special education teachers to allow them to use a multi-sensory approach in reading for our students. We also add, we also added additional ARC training for our special education teachers. They participate, participate in all of their building-level trainings, but we felt it was really important to give them the opportunity to have a separate training to address their individual needs and provide an opportunity to scaffold their teaching to meet their students' needs in the 15-1, 12-1-3, and 12-1-2 classes. We provided devices for our speech and language therapists with various apps to assist with working with students with AAC devices. We added additional social workers and psychologists throughout the district. And we also have allowed and paid for professional development for our related service providers with an online platform. Sometimes it's very difficult to bring in presenters to address various needs. And this has been a really meaningful avenue for them to access professional development utilizing an online resource that are, that is specifically driven for them to choose professional development opportunities related to the students that they're servicing. And then, family engagement. We provide a weekly O-Blast. I hope some of you are signed up for it. If not, please let me know. We send out weekly communication of We send out weekly communication of various professional development opportunities for our families to participate in, any special education news, as well as WIHD classes for a variety of different topics. We do offer monthly parent sessions. Our monthly parent sessions are also offered as a bilingual session as well. We move forward with progress notes being communicated every 10 weeks. In the past, at the elementary level, they were only completed at the 20th and 40th week, and we now complete them four times a year. We felt it was critical for our families to have a pulse on how well their students are doing in regards to their IUP progress. So we did make that transition, as well as participation in the committee on special education meetings. Please don't forget, December 4th through 8th is Inclusive Schools Week. So if you want to join, I would be happy to send you a flyer. But district-wide, I want to thank Kathleen Walsh-Pera, who really started this initiative over at Park School. Next year, we're going to be working with Dr. Dealey and utilizing some of our Equity Fellows to really expand the Inclusive Schools Week. But this year, it is Draw Me In, is our topic. And we are very excited to see all the tweets and all the posts around Inclusive Schools Week. Any questions? Shall we turn it over to Nancy? Oh, sorry, questions, sorry.
I just have a couple clarification questions and then to summarize my comments more clearly. Could you, because a lot of times it's interchangeable, could you elaborate a bit more on what distinguishing factor between emotional disability and emotional, what was the other category? Emotional dysfunction, I think was the other category? Disturbance.
Yeah, so New York State has, I mean, in my experience as an educator for 23 years, New York State has changed the name of that classification category probably three or four times. It was emotionally handicapped at one point. It was originally emotionally disturbed, and it was emotionally handicapped, and it was back to emotionally disturbed again, and now it's an emotional disability. So it's really just a matter of the fact that the state has changed the name of that classification. But when we're looking at an emotional disability, we're looking at students who present with a significant mental health challenge that's persistent and pervasive over a period of time and that impacts their ability to function in school.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to say formally, thank you all for the hard work you're doing and the progress that you're making with just expanding the opportunities for classified students. I mean, it's evident in the increased graduation rates, you know, just how much work you're putting into this. And so I want to make sure, you know, it's clear that I always have a great appreciation for the work that everybody in our district does and how the improvement is definitely showing itself. So anytime I ask any questions about any outliers in the data, it's only because I think the whole point of us doing all this data collection is to see where we're growing, but also see where we need to grow more. And it's not, although it is very brave to kind of put data on display, it is that we are accumulating it for a purpose. And so it behooves us to kind of have those candid conversations around that, right? Because there are national trends, but unfortunately, there are historical trends, right? And then it becomes a question of the resources we have, the resources we're allocating towards things. Can we reexamine that? Do we need to redistribute that in a different way, right? Because facilities might play a big impact on the things that we can and cannot do, but maybe we're not allocating resources properly. Not properly, but we can improve, right? Trial and error type of things in some areas, right? When I hear, you know, the comment about, you know, our expected increase in students who have needs with, coming out of COVID around mental health needs, and those are students primarily, I think you said, need to be placed out of district, right? Is that primarily just space needs or is it a combination of different resources that we might need or need to reallocate in some way, especially knowing that we've got so many grants and so many resources around specifically addressing mental health needs? So those are just all curiosities that I would have, just for us to examine and see how, you know, because I think that question around, I appreciate you touching on some of the curiosities they had with the meeting before last around, you know, I think the conversation around what needs could be met in general education doesn't necessarily come from the lens of stigmatizing special education, but just a matter of fact, when we look at data and overrepresentation in certain areas, is that a result of that, right? Not necessarily stigmatizing the classification of students, right? But just making sure that we're utilizing our resources in a way that's actually be, you know, done with the best fidelity for the outcomes of the students, right? Because I think many of us would agree, although we look at this data and we see, oh, this is national trends and this is, you know, all of these other things, these are people. Those numbers are people, right? No matter how small the percentage is or no matter how consistent the data shows us these things. And that's why I've always advocated for not just the data, but how to make sure that we are recognizing the intersections of what the data is telling us and some of the overlap, right? Overrepresentation in certain areas and how that might trend, right? Whether it be gender or ethnicity and all these different things, and how are we addressing that, right, with our resources? It's one thing to say, here are some more resources, but are we allocating them in the best way possible is always where my curiosity comes. And that's why I appreciate us digging so deep into data, because it gives us the chance to do that, right? To have those kind of brave explorations of how do we break cycles that we have sort of subliminally just become accustomed to, right? And so I appreciate you all, you know, laying it out on display and so much great work you've done. And I look forward to, you know, how the board can continue to support you all to expand these things. And I was thinking about, you mentioned the apartment, I was like, it's a shame that we weren't able to utilize the, we bought the property, the church, the little house was uninhabitable, but that would have been a perfect place to have that, but.
You would have had a whole house. Just imagine.
So I think, I just wanted to touch on that in some sense, right? Because I think sometimes I can be a little brainy and nerdy and like, my brain just kind of looks at data and just kind of like, it's like.
I love brainy and nerdy.
So, you know, it's not necessarily be like, oh, look at that, but it's just like, what is that telling us and how are we working to approach it differently than we might have before? So I just thank you all for the great work you've done. Thank you.
And I think the trends were so telling, and that's why it was so important to break down every single school. Because it allows us to be very transparent, but for us to come back and see that there's a commonality that's not just elementary or secondary, but now it's district. So it's really important to look at that individual data.
And also, as you, I just want to address one more thing. You're talking about resources and tapping into the resources and how are we allocating them. It's also important, especially in some of the difficulties that we're struggling with, is recognizing how we tap into community-based resources too. Because there are a lot of resources within the school, but there are also resources that we need to make sure we're connecting families with and that we're utilizing those community-based resources so that way we have that kind of wraparound support for our students and for our families to support the whole piece.
Which is definitely our next focus. We're in the beginning stages, but you will also see that in our budget season. But our meetings that we're holding right now to expand that work is tremendously focused in that area.
I just want to give you credit for your great presentations. This was a very good night. And there's so many things I could highlight, but one thing that just really sticks out and I can see, especially at the secondary level, is the integration of students across the board and the inclusive environment. And so, you know, I appreciated the elementary levels that are there, but I got to say, between my own children, some of them are in college now and some of them are in the schools, like lots of kids thrive when those opportunities are available and grow in so many ways. And you see it in the community when you are out in public spaces and you see our kids interacting with one another. And that happens because of the intentional work that you do in the buildings and with our educators. So I just want to really give you credit for that. I want you to know that it's very visible and really appreciate that work. It makes a difference in people's lives for all students.
I will add, just again, I thank the Board of Education and the community for supporting the RISEs program. That's near and dear to my heart. It's so important. And again, the team and the principals for making the space available to make that happen and all the additional resources. I know the Board of Education over the summer put together a wish list of a lot of data, a lot of detail. I'm cognizant of the time, and we don't mean, but we're trying to address all needs here and to give you a full, comprehensive understanding of all that's happening with our programs for special education. So as you can tell, given the level of detail and information in there, there's a ton of information to process, but I want to thank you all for just putting together a very comprehensive presentation. Hopefully, it addresses the board's data needs. I know we have Nancy up next, and again, it's our intention to be as efficient, as effective, but again, to address the needs of the board and giving you a full, comprehensive, especially as we enter budget season.
I really appreciate you taking all the comments and questions in stride, and it's just really clear you care about your jobs and you enjoy your jobs and you care about the students, and I want to thank you for that.
Questions make for a great presentation and conversation. They do.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here to share some information on our multilingual learner programs. So our multilingual learner programs encompass our K-12 ENL programs, English as a New Language Program, our pre-K through 8 dual-language program, as well as our secondary world language program. For purposes of today's presentation, however, I will not really be speaking to or focusing on our world language program. So as always, we begin with our why, but I need to begin by acknowledging and recognizing the amazing team of educators that I have the privilege of working with, our dual-language teachers, who are such committed bilingual educators, whether they're bilingual or not, our amazing ENL team, K-12, who are so committed to supporting our students. And so much of what they do is not so much about supporting language learning and development, but also supporting students' SEL needs and ensuring that we're creating a very welcoming environment for our students. And also have the privilege of working with administrators who will do anything to ensure that our schools are welcoming spaces for students and for families. So our why is focused on really ensuring that we have systems that are responsive to the needs of our newcomer students and our immigrant origin students and our multilingual learners, and also that we are aligned with New York State regulations for the education of multilingual learner students. So throughout the presentation, you'll hear me, you will hear me refer to CR Part 154. So it's Commissioners Regulations Part 154, which really govern the education of multilingual learners in New York State. So a lot of what we do and how we design our programs are to be in alignment with those guidelines. We're also very much aligned with the blueprint for English language learners, for English language learner success, which is really the map that New York State has provided as guidance for supporting multilingual learners. And that includes ensuring that we're creating partnerships with families, that we're supporting bilingualism and biliteracy, that we are creating welcoming spaces, and that we're using assessment and assessment data to ensure that we are supporting students' growth, both in their home language and in their development towards English proficiency. So not coincidentally, we are also, our pillars in the district are aligned with this blueprint. So we're looking at data literacy, we're looking at family and community engagement, and small group instruction, and of course, equity. So I'm going to begin, I will be sharing some data on three groups, including our immigrant origin students, our English language learners, and then, very similar to what Ms. Mauricio shared, our English language learners who are duly identified and have IUPs. I'll start with our immigrant origin students, and I decided to start with this group in particular because I think in a previous board meeting, there were some questions about how can we plan or anticipate or predict how many immigrant students we receive in any given year? And the truth is, yes, we can, but no, we can't. So we can predict some patterns, but we definitely cannot predict numbers. So some of the things that we know for sure is that our immigrant students, well, let me backtrack a little bit. The definition of an immigrant student is a student who was born outside of the US or its territories and has been in a New York State school for three years or less. So that's the definition of an immigrant student. And we are required as a district to report on the number of immigrant students, and that also helps to trigger funding for the district so we can receive Title III immigrant funding. And it's a very specific formula. They look at growth over a three-year period, but we have seen an increase in our Title III immigrant funding in the past two years, whereas in the two years prior to that, we didn't receive any funding.
So that means a student could be here as little as one day, up to three years. Is that, that's the classification?
Correct. And if they were in the country for, let's say, two months, they go back to their country and they come back, then the clock starts to tick again, right? And that also can include students who entered a school outside of Osning and then come to us and have only been here for six months, we would still have to tag them as immigrant students. So not all of our immigrant students are English learners. Some of our, some students who come from other countries are coming from English-speaking countries or have had education in English. And not all of our English learners are immigrant students. We have English learners who are born in this country, but perhaps enter school having only been exposed to another language. So I think that's an important distinction. Our students arrive all throughout the academic year, but we do see some patterns of increase enrollment at certain times of the year, which you'll be looking at in a few minutes. And the largest percentage of our immigrant students come from Spanish-speaking countries. So this is the number of immigrant enrollment by year, so this is new immigrant. So if you look at 2019, 20, we had 88 newly enrolled immigrants enter the district. And then in 2020, 21, for obvious reasons, the number was lower. But as you can see, there was a significant increase in 2021, 22. The number began to rise, I would say, that first week of August and steadily through January, and then there was a bit of a decrease, but we had 307 new immigrants enter the district that year. And for a lot of reasons, right? After COVID, the worst of COVID, when travel opened up, families that hadn't been able to travel entered. So we saw a significant increase that year. Last year, we had 128. And this year to date, I think this is as of the last week of October, we had 122 new immigrant students enter. And then this is just a comparison of immigrant students who are English learners versus not English learners. So you can see that the majority of our Ls are, of our immigrant students are Ls, but there are some who are not. And again, you can see that large number in 2021, 22, which I don't think was a surprise. We did look at, because I had a. We did look at, because I, I had a feeling noticing when I, you know, when, when we're processing a large number of intakes, but I really wanted to look at the numbers and I asked our data person to help with looking over a five-year period, when did students enter, at what months, right? To get a sense of, in terms of resource allocation and staffing and what were some of the needs. So what we see is that we have students who typically enter at some point in the early spring months. And that's partly due that in some countries in South America or in some regions of some countries in South America, the school year ends in January. And so then there's a lot of travel coming into the country. So we see an increase in March through April, then a somewhat of a decrease in early summer, and then it trickles up again in August and at the beginning of the school year.
Is that, is, I'm just curious, you may not have this, but is that something that is much more of a very comparable per national, in terms of numbers even statewide?
I'm not sure if national. I, I do know that in the region, it seems to be the pattern of the trend.
Okay.
And, and we also see it in that we see the travel between districts, like between Peekskill and Austin and Tarrytown and some other districts.
So your, the, what this implies right now is that we have to kind of be ready for that. And we, so we plan today for, well, next year, March, not this calendar year, March, but the next calendar year, March.
Yeah.
Essentially to handle what's, what's needed to support this.
And as we schedule students, and we're very intentional in assigning E and L teachers who can work with groups to ensure that we're creating spaces where we can include students so that groups are not so large. So it just takes a lot of working around, but we know, I think what we know for sure is that we will be receiving immigrant students at some point throughout the year or at all points throughout the year.
Right. And it could, it could be a variety of different language speaking students, you know, whether they're coming from, from-
Yes.
-South America, Central America, or they could be coming from like, you know, countries like Ukraine or-
So for the most part, it is Spanish-speaking.
Okay.
We did welcome two Ukrainian families last year. I was, I thought there would be more coming, but only two have arrived. One of them is at the high school and one of them, one of them is at Brookside. We've also welcomed some Albanian families, families from the Philippines, from Africa, but for the most part, it's from Spanish-speaking countries. So English language learners, our English language learners, according to the state definition, is a student who has entered our schools. And it's a requirement that families complete a home language questionnaire. And if the home language questionnaire indicates that there's a language other than English spoken at home, that triggers a screening, which includes an interview of the parent and the child to learn about language practices in the home and to determine if there might be some English language acquisition needs. If through the interview process, it's thought that the child may need support in learning English or in continuing to develop their English proficiency, then they're administer, they're administered an assessment called the NICE Tell. And the NICE Tell then determines what is the child's level of English proficiency. Are they at the entering level? Are they more advanced? And we do welcome students at all levels of proficiency, which I'll share in a, in a little bit. But if we look at the number of students who have arrived, and I think you've seen this in another presentation, this is a view of the number of English learners enrolled each year. So this isn't necessarily new arrivals. For example, the number in 21, 22 is 817. That includes new arrivals, but it also includes students who arrived in previous years who are still maintaining their English learner designation and have not exited. But it also reflects students who have exited, so they're not reflected in this number. But this is the number that is enrolled in any particular year who are identified as English language learners. And as you can see, in October, we went, we were at 1,000 and as of yesterday morning, we're at 1,023. So the number continues to shift every day.
I have a question.
Yes.
My mind is still on that slide that showed such an increase in the spring. And I'm thinking about region's exams and standardized tests. And I was wondering, is there any grace period given to students who enroll-
Yes.
-from a new country? Like if you enroll in, in April and-
Yes.
You know, the ELA exam is in April and maybe you haven't had a chance to even take-
There's a one-year exemption.
Okay.
Used to be two years and it's been reduced to a one-year exemption. So we're very, very careful. We work with a technology office and ensure that they're tagged in Infinite Campus. We review the list many times to ensure that we are not testing students who have been here for less than a year, but they are not exempt from the NICE flat. And even during the pandemic, when there, no one else was taking the ELA or the regions, they have to take the NICE flat because we need to measure their growth in English proficiency. I don't love the NICE flat. It's a three days, four days of testing for our students.
We've discussed how-
Yes.
-the, the issues with the NICE flat at, at the board table, I think pretty recently. But thank you for that.
Yes. This is just a breakdown of where our English learners are. As you can see, kindergarten has a very, very high number. This is from two weeks ago, so the number's higher. I think we're at 106, but this is the highest number in kindergarten that we have ever had. I think going back maybe four or five years, when I was assistant principal at Park, our number was like 65 and never went above 70. So we now have, this was quite a surprise. We have about 100 and I think it's a hundred, really 106. You can also see that we have a very high number in fourth grade. That is newcomers, but we also had a large influx two years ago in second grade. So those students are now in fourth grade. We also have a bubble in ninth grade and also in 12th grade. 12th grade, ninth grade is because two years ago, we had students coming in, in the seventh grade. 12th grade is more that we've had students coming in who are older. And that we've seen post-pandemic also. That's a pattern.
Are you generally, so if I'm reading this correctly and, you know, with that, that dark bar that's kind of across the bottom there, I'm reading this correctly, a lot of the children that are coming in, they are sixth grade and younger. That's where more, majority of them are coming in, but it seems like it's probably heavier in the kindergarten, I can't tell what that is, but it seems like it's kindergarten, I think that's fourth grade?
Fourth grade, yes.
Yeah, kindergarten, fourth grade there. Okay. So that's essentially where more of the resources would need to be shifted to-
Yes.
-to help support.
Correct.
Which is why, okay, I was just coming back-
So for example, if you look at the fourth grade, we're anticipating that we're going to need additional staffing in fifth grade next year because the number's going to be large.
Right.
And when we look deeper, we, we notice that some of those students are students with special needs. And so additional staffing will be needed because there's complexity to being able to serve students within their special education settings. So, so we are proposing some additional staffing.
And tell, tell us what your class looks like with, when it looks like this. I mean, what does it, what does it do to your classrooms? When, I mean, meaning that are you having space contention issues specifically?
Yes.
And what does that look like?
So for example, a lot of our dual, a lot of our students, our English learners are in the dual language program, right? So at some point, we, we run out of seats in dual language. However, students are also receiving, and I'll go into this in terms of service delivery, students also receive E and L services. So for the entering and emerging students, that's a co-taught environment, but it's also what we call, we, we used to call it pullout, but now we call it standalone. That means that we need spaces where teachers, the E and L teachers can work with those students in small groups. So for example, at Claremont, we have a classroom that four E and L teachers share. And we have partitions, but if you go there, at the end of the day, it's very, very noisy.
So, and so essentially what you're saying, this is with more space here, potentially that this would help alleviate a lot of that and give much more focused attention.
Absolutely.
Again, coming back to the space.
Yes.
Yeah.
And space is an issue, particularly for E and L service delivery that's not in the classroom.
Okay.
Which is mandated. This is just a breakdown so that you can see it by school, similar to what Ms. Mauricio shared. As you can see, 30% of our English learners are at the high school over four grades, followed by AMD, which is 18%. But if you look at Brookside and Claremont, they're at 17% over two grades. So that's a very, very large percentage in those two schools over those two grades. And again, fourth grade accounts for a lot of this. In terms of the English proficiency of our students, as I said, students are assessed annually using the NICE flat. And then that determines where they are in terms of their movement towards becoming proficient or reaching the commanding level. So our student, it, it's anticipated that students are going to move through, through the language development continuum. But language development is highly variable, right? For some kids, we see it at Park School. Park School exits the largest number of students through the NICE flat every year, right? There's something about being five years old and, and how they absorb language, but we also see students who really, really struggle with acquiring a second language. And if students are coming with any kind of trauma, then it may take longer. The research says it takes five to seven years to acquire a second language, but if there's trauma, it can take longer, right? Because there are other things that we need to attend to before students can really focus on learning a second language. So these are the levels of proficiency and students can exit through the NICE flat, right? Scoring commanding on the NICE flat or scoring expanding on the NICE flat and getting a three or four on the grade three to eight ELA or passing the English regions in the same year. So if you pass the English regions and you score expanding on the NICE flat, excuse me, you can exit E and L services. And then the number of minutes that students receive of E and L instruction is very much tied to their level of proficiency. So obviously, if you're an entering level student, you will receive more minutes of support than if you're an expanding or even a commanding student because you do have to receive services even when you're a commanding student. So a unit of study is 180 minutes. So for example, for our entering level students, they need to receive 360 minutes. And it's mandated that they receive some of that time in a standalone, which is that pullout, and then in that co-integrated teaching in E and L. So that means that we have, in ELA, so you have an English teacher or a elementary teacher who has to co-plan and co-teach with an E and L teacher who comes into the classroom to provide support for those students. It's not, it's not dissimilar to what happens in some of our integrated co-taught special ed classes. It's really co-planning, it's intentional, it's scaffolding, and it's helping provide access to the core curriculum for our English learners. And again, the number of minutes decreases as you go along, but we still need to provide supports for students. And then there's flexibility where you can also provide that co-taught, co-taught support in content area classes. And sometimes we choose to do that because we know that there's a lot of complexity in some of our content area classes in terms of the language. For example, in earth science or in U.S. history. These are the bilingual units of study that guide our dual language program, very similar. They have to have their E and L, oh, sorry. They have to have their E and L units, but they also have to have home language arts. So because the goal of the bilingual program is to support and maintain their home language, then they must also receive their home language support as a way to maintain the language, but also as a way to bridge to English.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just thinking about the NICE slits still and-
I think about it all spring long.
Well, I know, you know, we use, you know, state, we have state ELA tests, right? But that's not the only way we measure students' progress in ELA. We have our MAPS testing. We have our, you know, our ARC data. Is there a separate, maybe district-level assessment tool that we use ourselves to assess where students are there?
That's a great question. That's a great question. We don't have one currently. We recently embarked on a review of our multilingual learner programs. We have external consultants who are conducting a review. They're actually still in it. They came, they visited, they met with faculty. We, it's been, the focus has been on our middle and our high school programs because we know that we need to attend to, we need to find out what our strengths are, but where are areas that we need to continue to strengthen our programs. So they met with counselors, they met with teachers, they met with administrators. But part of what we're looking at is potentially an assessment that can also look at language development specifically. And there are some out there. Some are very outdated, but that's something that we requested of them to be able to recommend to us what ways that we can continue to assess our students in their language development. Thank you.
That's why it was a great question.
It was a great question. So this is a chart for grades nine to 12. Very honestly, we do not have as robust a bilingual program at the secondary level as we have in elementary and dual language. And that's partly because it's very, very difficult to secure content area teachers who are also bilingually certified. And that's not an Austin issue. That's a state issue, a nationwide issue. It's really a challenge, but it's one that we continue to try to address. We have a Teach for Tomorrow grant so that we can reimburse teachers who seek to pursue their bilingual extension. And we try to embark on partnerships with all kinds of colleges so that we can encourage our teachers to get their bilingual extension because if they're not bilingually certified, we cannot truly call them bilingual classes, right? We can call them Spanish-speaking, but they're not bilingual classes. This is a snapshot of the proficiency levels in terms of the patterns of where our students are in their proficiency. We see that a large number of our students that are at the emerging level and a very large number are at the expanding level. This is not unusual because as students progress through the language development continuum, that's a place where I don't ever want to use the word stuck or they, they plateau or the demands of the tasks that they have to do within literacy become more complex. So there's more complex text, more complex writing required. So we see that students need additional scaffolding and support to move beyond the expanding level into the commanding level. And so this year, we trained all of our new E and L teachers in how to use that NICE flat data to really look at where students are in the modality. So in listening, speaking and reading and writing, and what we see is that it's the writing. The writing is where they're really challenged. So we're focusing a lot of our professional development on helping teachers to be able to help students in their writing development, right? Through ARC, but through other types of activities and even in their small group instruction to support that writing development for students so that we can move them to the next level and move them to commanding.
So for, for that commanding, also known as proficient level?
Yes.
I guess, and this might have been in some of the other slides, but just at the high level, should that take, is that gauged on? I understand that in order to exit, there, now there's exit tickets to get, to, to be considered proficient as you laid out, the testing, et cetera. Is there a usual timeframe? Is it like three years? Is it five? Is it eight? Or it could be anything?
I think that we, we could probably dig into that. It could be anything. As I said, some of our younger students can exit in a year. It's not unheard of to see a student who entered Park School at entering and leaves commanding, right? It, it's, it's amazing. We see it, I think, in the lower levels. I think in, as kids are older, it becomes more challenging for them. Again, five to seven years is what the research says, but it's highly variable. We see kids who, who exit within two years. We also honestly sometimes see kids who regress, who may have gone on to transitioning and go back to emerging. Not many students, but we do see that as well. I say to parents, because I try to say to parents, you need to be an advocate. So if for some reason you see that your child isn't progressing from year to year, at least- for some reason you see that your child isn't progressing from year to year at least one level, then you need to reach out to me, you need to reach out to the teacher, and you need to find out how is your student being supported to continue to move along the language development continuum, right? And what can you do at home to continue to support as well?
And that was exactly going to be my follow-up. So does this program take into account, and maybe I'm just going to call it homework, because you have all these great things in the four walls of the school.
Right.
Student goes home. What part of this program sort of encourages whatever you've done through the four walls during the six, seven hours a day to continue in the home? So when the student goes home, it's sort of that continuum of work, like...
Right. So multiple levels. There's the books that go home. I mean, through our ARC program, we have books that are going home. Families have access to the ARC bookshelf so that they can, you know, teachers are telling parents and showing parents, how do you get into the ARC bookshelf so that you can have access to books? We send additional information home. We push a lot of reading, right? Volume of reading and support, and honestly, it doesn't matter if the reading is in your home language. So if you speak Spanish at home, just find a quiet place and support your child to read in Spanish, or read to your child in Spanish. It's all about literacy, and we will help with support in bridging from that home language into English. That's what we do, but we just want to push literacy. So it's a lot of workshops and support for parents. And so we have these at the beginning of the year. We have ENL information nights, and a lot of what we do there is, you know, we go over CR Part 154, but that's not what's interesting to parents. It's, this is the grade-level curriculum, this is what your child is going to learn, this is where your child should be at the end of the year, and this is how you can support.
Right. And so similar to non-ELL students, are you like tracking that? So for example, and I don't know if this is a thing, but like, okay, part of the program is you're supposed to read three English-language books in the course of a week, or whatever the number is. Do you track to make sure that that, just like any non-ELL student is doing their work?
Yes, of course. And in dual language, they have to read from both languages.
Okay. Great.
I imagine also there's probably some level of after-school that would probably need to be supported here as well, because, you know, there are many families that are, you know, where both parents are working, you know, whatever time they finish working, and, you know, there's still that need for after the six hours or the school day support, where it's kind of like it's acting as almost like the parents, in a way, to support that level of reinforcement through homework and reading.
So district-wide, we have multiple programs that support, you know, some of it is enrichment and some of it is care, right? So we have Boys and Girls Club. We're fortunate to have the Twenty-First Century Grant Program at Brookside that enrolls a lot of our students and a lot of our English learners. And then we have more targeted program. We just started a morning program at Claremont two weeks ago with one of our ENL teachers, who's a former journalist from Australia, Mr. Orm, and he said, "I have a dream for a writing program. Let's look at who might be the kids that would benefit." So we're looking at those transitioning and expanding kids and targeted that group, and they're coming in at eight. We don't provide transportation, but we reached out to families and said, "Can you drop your child off at eight o'clock?" And we have students there. He's running the program. One cohort is Monday, Tuesday, and the other one is Wednesday, Thursday, to continue to work on their writing. At the same time, we have another ENL teacher who's working with a group of, very small group of four students, who we have evidence that they had interrupted schooling, and so we need to work on foundational skills, so she's working with them. So trying to really develop targeted programs to support our students and whatever the specific needs are. So this is just, I'll just go through these quickly, but this is a snapshot of the proficiency levels in each building, as you can see and as to be expected. Park School has a large number of students at the entering level. This is Brookside. As you can see, in the first grade, for first graders, we have a lot of students at the expanding level, which points to the fact that students are moving along in terms of the language development continuum. Notice that second grade, you have a lower number of students at expanding, but in a future slide, you will see that that's because they already scored commanding, right? So that's the good news. This is Claremont School. Lots of emerging and transitioning students. Oops, I'm flipping here and not flipping here. This is Claremont. This is Roosevelt. So students at all levels. This is AMD. Again, lots of students at the expanding level, but really at all levels, right? And they come in at all levels. Here is the high school. This one's organized a little bit differently. It's organized by grade, so you can see we have in grade nine, large percentage of students at the emerging level and at the expanding level. So really, our students are at all levels of proficiency, and so we meet them where they are, and we support them and provide the mandated services, and sometimes in very creative ways. So even though a student's score is proficient or commanding, we are mandated per Part 154 to continue to provide services. Two students with our ENL specialists, but they also receive accommodations for two years. Again, this is very critical, that we track these students, because we need to ensure that they're receiving their services even after they have exited through the NICE flat or any other ways. And when we have transfer students, it's critical for us to communicate with that district to find out if they exited, when they exited, because they are still eligible for those accommodations with us. So lots of following up when we have students who transfer. These are our commanding students. As I said, if you look at grade two, so we have a large number of students who are at the commanding level. So this is where they are in each grade. And so I think you've seen this slide before. These are our duly identified, these were in Ms. Mauricio's presentation, our duly-identified students, and this is taking very, very collaboration and coordination between myself and the team here to ensure that students are receiving their mandated services. And, you know, we always get the question, which trumps the, right? That's the question we get. Is it the ENL, or is it the students with disabilities? It's both. So it has to be a careful coordination of services, and that's not easy, and we haven't always been successful. I can point to, you know, the middle school, where we may not always have had the structures, but we're really working towards creating the structures so that all of our students receive their mandated services, whether it's their special ed services or their ENL services. So how do we deliver services to our students per Part 154? So obviously, we have a bilingual education model, and twenty years ago, Osning chose to deliver bilingual education through a dual-language model. And I want to give a shout-out to those ladies there in the audience, Dr. Deely and Ms. Pueyo, who were actually at the birth of dual language, who were part of the planning committee and part of the implementation committee of dual language twenty years ago. And so it's an equity model. It's an opportunity for students to continue to learn and build their home language while they learn English and continue to develop bilingualism and biliteracy. And it provides an opportunity for members of the community who are not Spanish speakers to learn Spanish, so that everyone in dual language is a second-language learner, and they're learning language together. We have two-way classes, which means you have classes where you have fifty percent of students who are English learners and fifty percent who are Spanish learners, or as close as an approximation as we can get to a fifty-fifty. And then we have one-way classes. So a one-way class is solely composed of English learners, and those are students who are at the entering level of proficiency in English. And that model is because we need to support the development in their home language so that they can continue to develop that language, but also as a way to bridge to English, right? It's using their home language as an asset. So for many years, we've had one-way classes in pre-K, first grade, and second grade. Last year, we needed to add a third-grade one-way class, just because the numbers were so high, and we needed to have spaces that welcomed our entering-level students. So now we have one-way classes in pre-K through three.
Can you talk about the, on the dual-language side? What is the waiting list looking like? Is that still pretty long?
It's pretty extensive.
And how many classrooms worth do you estimate that roughly it is across the grades?
So I can only really speak, we only have a waitlist in really in pre-K and K, because that's really where we go through the lottery system. We typically leave about eighty families on the waitlist.
Eighty families is, how many kids roughly? Is that about two kids per family roughly?
Not always, so I would say maybe about a hundred and twenty kids or so. And so we will be proposing, I'll share a little bit of what we will be proposing through the budget process. We want to continue to create opportunities, well, first of all, we need to be within the mandates to provide bilingual education options, right, for our English learners, but we also want to be mindful that the community is requesting additional spaces for students who want to learn Spanish as their second language as well. So we have expanded dual language. Last year, we added a seventh section in kindergarten, and that section moved up to first grade this year, and we'll be moving up to second grade next year, but we still don't think that's sufficient.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, I apologize because you're in late, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand and maybe other board members as well. There are students who are English-language learners who are put in to, I'm just going to call it, non-dual-language standard classes. And then there's English-language learners who are put into dual-language classes.
Correct.
And then there's English-language learners who are put into a dual-language class where all of the students are ELL.
Correct.
So how do you, which is the, which has the best outcomes, I guess, is what I'm trying to get, I guess my question is, which of those choices? And how do you decide, and I think you just said, the dual-language classes that have all English-language learners are the ones at that first level?
Correct.
And then you have dual-language classes which have English-language learners at other levels of proficiency. And then you have, I'm just going to use the term, standard classes, which have English-language learners. So how do you figure out who goes where, with the exception, as you laid out, the first level of English-language learners? Who goes where, and how do you know which is sort of has the best outcomes out of those quote-unquote choices amongst them?
So for the one-way classes, which is composed of all English learners, those tend to be students at the entering level, right, as we said, and students who perhaps are new to the country, and may not have a sibling at home who speaks English, right? So we know that we're going to continue to support Spanish. So in kindergarten, in pre-K, it's ninety-ten, ninety percent Spanish, ten percent English, and as they go up in grade, we incrementally increase the level of English. If students are at entering, I'm sorry, emerging or above, they typically go into a two-way class, right? The fifty-fifty, because they already have some proficiency. And then we have, and I'll go into this in the next slide, which is the ENL clusters. If a student is at a more advanced level of proficiency, has not been in a dual-language program in the past, which means they may not have the Spanish-language skills, then they would go into an ENL cluster class where they are receiving ENL support. I would love to say that that works all the time, but because of the large number of students that we've received, there are instances where an entering-level student is going into a cluster. And it's unfortunate, and it's something that we're trying to address, but the numbers have been incredibly high. And so in an ENL cluster, unlike the dual-language class, they're in a monolingual class at the elementary level, they're with a childhood ed certified teacher, perhaps, I can point to Roosevelt as a school that has three classroom teachers who are also TESOL certified, so they can support, and then the ENL teacher co-teaches with the teacher and also provides the standalone support. So the difference is that in dual language, we're providing an additive bilingual education model, meaning that as we're teaching you English, as we're adding a language, we're not taking away your language, we're continuing to support your development of Spanish, right? But in an ENL cluster, the goal is to lead you to English proficiency, and we're not necessarily helping you to maintain your language. A goal, which I'll, for me, is a goal, is that every student who enters, we're going to give you the NICE tell to determine your level of English proficiency, but we're also going to screen you to determine the level of your home language, which is also going to help us determine your placement. Like, that to me is the dream, and I think we're getting closer to that, and would be ideal.
Right, and that was going to be my, and maybe we talked more around budget time, but, well, again, it's a budget time, but I guess my thought is, what in your best-case scenario is it that all entering students, all entering ELL proficiency should be in a dual language? That no, maybe it's not one-size-fits-all, but I'm just trying to figure out...
Well, it's actually supposed to be the default for English learners is a bilingual education program, unless the parent opts out. And some parents do. Some parents do. So some of the students who are not in dual language is because the parent has opted out, but in most instances, the parents want to be, their child to be in a dual-language program, and they want to maintain their language.
Okay, I think I get it. I'm just like, if we didn't have a dual-language program here, then where would those students have, they would just been in a standard class with what the other supports that either pull out or push into that class?
Well, there are other bilingual education models, such as transitional bilingual, which means that similarly to an ENL program, you are supporting them. You may be giving them some bilingual education, but your goal is to move them towards English. You're not helping them maintain their home language. So that's different. So I think our, the choice in Osning was, we don't want transitional bilingual, where it's just about getting them to speak English. We want to continue to develop their language, a linguistically sustaining and really a culturally responsive model for students. So just a highlight of our dual-language program, as I said, it was founded twenty years ago. It provides access to Spanish learning for non-English speakers, and we also know that part of one of the pillars, so the pillars of dual language are bilingualism, biliteracy, grade-level academic achievement, and then cross-cultural competence, right? We want our students to be able to feel comfortable and interact and open themselves up to communicating and interacting with students from other, from people from other linguistic backgrounds, right? We want them to be open to traveling and to having those bilingual skills as well. We have six to seven sections in grades K to five. Here at AMD, we have, in sixth grade, we have five sections currently. And then our students receive advanced Spanish instruction at the middle school and the high school level on their path to the seal of biliteracy. This slide will show the distribution of students in K to five dual language. So on the left, you see our non-ELs. You can see the number that are not in dual language as compared to the ones that are in dual language. Just note that the ones who are, the not-ELs who are in dual language could include former-ELs. They could include students who have exited out. And then on the right, you see the number of our English learners who are in dual language versus the ones who are not. Some of those students who are not, it may have been parental choice, it may have been because they need a special setting, because they have IPs, but for the most part, it's because we may not have space, and we haven't been able to give them the option of a dual-language program. So in that sense, we are not in compliance. Our resources have been limited, even though we continue to grow the program. And another challenge is also finding bilingually-certified teachers. That's been, in the past few years, that's been really a challenge. If we were to say we're going to continue to grow the program, then we have to find the teachers to be able to support the program, to provide bilingual instruction. So, moving on to secondary, very similar. We have integrated co-teaching in English classes. So you have an ELA teacher and an English teach, an E and L teacher who co-plan and deliver instruction together. And we provide standalone classes for entering and emerging-level students. At the high school, the, the E and L teacher who co-teaches in that English class sees the students later in the day for their standalone, or what we call the support class. So it's really a seamless coordination. I'm seeing you here in your English class, but I'm going to see you later. And I'm going to help you in terms of developing your language and across all modalities. But I'm also going to prepare you for what's going to happen in the English class tomorrow. And that could be vocabulary, that could be reading a modified text so that you learn what the strategies are. So multiple ways that works. And we don't have that same model here at the middle school, but we are moving toward it. Not always is the co-teacher in your English class your standalone teacher, but it's something that Dr. Nova and I have been working toward, and we hope that we can implement that next year. We also have some co-taught E and L content area classes, again, to be able to assist students with accessing the content. And we have some content area classes for Spanish speakers, both here at the middle school and at the high school. And then we have an emergent literacy program, which means that for students who have interrupted schooling, for the most part, these are students at the high school level who have a home language literacy of third grade or below. And that's assessed using a state assessment called the multi-literacy screener. And so we determined that they are CYF, what's students with interrupted formal education. And they are in three periods of emergent literacy to support them to continue to develop English skills. And one of those periods is a co-taught period with an English teacher and an E and L teacher. And then again, this is very similar to what was presented by my colleagues. We have a collaborative model of instruction. Teachers plan together. We try to maintain a balance of no more than forty percent of our Ls to our monolingual students in a class. It's opportunities for students to work together and to have language models. And we also utilize the six models of integrated co-teaching. And all of our teachers are trained in the co-teaching models. And this year, we're, we send the content area teacher or the English teacher with the E and L teacher. So the partners go together to training in the co-teaching models. We're very fortunate to have a very strong partnership with the regional bilingual education resource network, the ARBURN. I actually sit on their steering committee, which is great, because I let them know what we need. And they're very responsive, and they save seats for us. So they allot us a certain number of seats so that we can send our teachers to participate in this free professional development. It's at no cost to us to partner districts. This is the attendance data for K to twelve for our English learners. As you can see, not significant differences between our monolingual students and our English learners. However, in some buildings, that may look different. I know that at the high school, there are some significant differences. But overall, we're not seeing chronic absenteeism as a major problem with our English learners. This is the ERLA data, similarly to what was presented for our Ls. This is the baseline data, and what we will be looking at is how our students are progressing. So this includes all students, all English learners in K to eight at all proficiency levels. This is the ANEEL data, which is a Spanish ARC assessment for students in K to five. So this is for our, our Ls and non-LS within the dual-language program. So the, the non-LS are on the left, and the Ls are on the right. Again, baseline data, and what we are looking at is how our children continue to progress as the year goes along. NWA is, this is the reading data for K to eleven. So as you can see, many of our English learners are at the low level. But again, this encompasses all levels of proficiency.
And that assessment is just given in English, right? Or is it given?
The, the math is given in, in, in Spanish. They actually have a choice.
Okay, yeah.
Similar to the New York State assessment where they can take it in Spanish. Again, very similar to the reading. This is the graduation data, and I believe you've seen this before, for our English learners. Does point to, if you look at the five-year graduation rate or the, and the six-year cohort, many of our students need more time, right? It's about needing more time to develop English proficiency. And the, the age at which they arrive also has an impact. And again, we're seeing students arriving at an older age. And this is why it's so critical for us to ensure that we have records from their home country so that we can evaluate them and give them as much credit for any courses that they've taken using the, the appropriate guidelines, so that we can ensure that they can graduate in time and they don't age out. So that's very critical. And we're trying to, I think we're, we're making strides in that regard. And we're really communicating the importance to, to families that they provide records. Sometimes it's impossible, and they leave their countries in really not the best circumstances. So to be able to gather the records can sometimes be challenging for our families.
I have another question.
Yes.
I know our special education students are entitled to stay in school now through age twenty-two. Are E and L students given any extended period of time that they're, that we are?
No.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so.
Can I just ask really quick on those bar charts? Is there a direct correlation between the students that are commanding and the, the, the passage of those tests? So as a student becomes more proficient in English, they're more likely to pass, or in this case, you know, be average at least on the NWA, on the ANEEL? Is that, is that correct? It doesn't have to be.
I don't, I don't, I, I don't want to say yes or no. I think it's something that I, we would need to look at.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's, I think it's what we would expect.
Right.
Right? I think it's what we would expect, but I, I also feel like we're very early in, in using these tools. So it's something that we probably will have to look at.
Okay.
So looking at how we support our students through small-group instruction, again, our E and L teachers, this is what they do. They work daily with students in small groups. So we've been very intentional in helping them use the data that's available to them to be able to create those groups. And to be able to support in very targeted ways the needs of our students. So they're using the ERLA data, they're using the ANEEL, they're using the MAP data, and they're also using that NICATEL data. One of the things that we did is we have included with Ms. Turner's support, our E and L teams are being trained in ARC. They've been trained in ARC. We've purchased a toolkit for them and provided the resources because it's critical for them to be aligned with what's happening in the classroom and that they're able to understand what are the goals that the students have and what are the needs that the students have, so that they can target instruction to those needs. And extensive professional development in supporting teachers to do this.
I have just a quick question.
Yes.
I know when, when ARC was being rolled out, there were certain books that were not available. I think it was either seventh or eighth, I think it may have been eighth. And do we know if that's now? And I, I know the first year rollouts, you know, it's always, it's not the smoothest for anything, right? But, you know, in general. But in this case, do we have much more of that reading? All the books that were needed back then? Have we been able to get that for the eighth-grade reading?
I probably have to defer to Ms. Turner on that one.
So are you referring to dual-language?
Yeah.
So dual-language goes up to sixth grade. And currently, we're still working to identify resources for the Spanish side of ARC in sixth grade.
Okay, so.
They, they did not develop them.
Through, at least for this, for dual-language through eighth grade, right?
Well, dual-language only goes to sixth grade.
Now it goes to eighth.
Well, the Spanish-language classes, the two A and two B.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But that's, but ARC is not taught in those sections.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, okay, got it, okay.
So we're working, we're working with the sixth-grade team to ensure that they have the materials they need. So in terms of our focus on equity for our students, two years ago, we decided that we wanted to ensure that our students, our English learners, had access to the four plus-one pathway, which means that they can take the checkpoint B exam in Spanish, in their home language, in lieu of that fifth region. And we weren't always scheduling students to do that, so now we're doing that in January. Instead of waiting for June, we're scheduling students in January, giving them the opportunity to take the checkpoint B exam. And then if they don't pass it, then they can take it again in June. Last year, we had a seventy percent passing rate in January. And this year, we realized that it's because if students are not in the Spanish class per se, then they may not know the structure of the exam. So we're doing some morning and after-school sessions just to prepare them for becoming familiar with the exam, because we really want them to pass the checkpoint B. So that's one less regions that they have to pass, and that helps them on the road to graduation. We've added seven, we've added a seventh dual-language section in kindergarten and first grade. We now have authentic Spanish resources in dual-language, whereas before, we had mostly translations of English books. So it's really access for both our English learners and our Spanish learners. Real Spanish, authentic books. We have extended-year programs. We have an extended-year program for dual-language students over the summer who meet the criteria for the summer program. We have before and after-school programming. We have summer arts programming for our students at Austin High School. We have our lovely Ed Prep Academy, which is really meant to nurture our future educators, but it's also a college and career readiness program for our students. I, I know Ms. Fox Saltor recently presented to our Ed Prep students. Aren't they wonderful?
Great.
So it's really an opportunity for our students to continue to develop skills, but hopefully so that they'll be the bilingual educators of the future. The program is open to everyone, but we really, we really are trying to encourage our bilingual students into the program. We continue to strengthen the path to the seal of biliteracy. So we have students who speak a language that is not part of our world language department. For example, if you speak Mandarin and you're fluent, we will support you to take a, an exam so that you can demonstrate your proficiency, like the apple, and therefore gain the point so that you can qualify for the seal of biliteracy. So it's really supporting students who have low-incidence languages so that they can also attain this designation. And we continue to work closely with our special education colleagues in coordination of services. In terms of staff, we have added staff and sometimes on an emergency basis when our numbers continue to grow up, to go up. So at Brookside, at Roosevelt, and OHS, we have increased the number of E and L teachers. And we continue to be very intentionally focused on professional development through ARC, our integrated co-teaching, data-informed practices. And then last year, we trained content area teachers at the middle school and our curriculum coordinators in PSYOP, the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, which is designed for English learners, but it's just good teaching for all. And that will continue as well. And so just want to highlight our lovely E and L Arts Academy, which was implemented by myself in collaboration with Kate Matthews, our cultural arts director. And it was an opportunity for high school students to come in for just over three weeks, gain elective credit, again, trying to support students on their path to graduation, build academic language, have exposure to new interests, and really connect with caring adults. And one, one unintended outcome was that we had several students who registered for school at the end of June, which meant they would not come to school until September. But we invited them to be part of this program. And so they came, they were here, they, they made connections with other students, they made connections with adults. We ensured that if they really, really liked Mr. Whitehead's photography class, that we enrolled them in September in another class with him or with another teacher. The, the classes were co-taught with a cultural arts teacher and an E and L teacher. And so, so those students, even before they officially began school in September, already had a, gained one elective credit and had made some connections. And we culminated, so they, they had photography, they had journaling, visual journaling, and storytelling through the arts. So they had choices. And then we culminated the program by going to the Katona Museum of Art, which was a fabulous experience, and then, and then stopping at King Cone, which was great for some of our new kids. So it was, it was pretty fabulous.
One quick question?
Sure.
Just generally speaking, since you've already addressed like the equity slide, I remember in terms, in terms of resources and, and how we could be more supportive of these initiatives. I remember the last budget season around realizing that there was like one interpreter for the whole district, and we kind of made do with that, and I think we used technology in some other areas. But in terms of equity, how do we currently accommodate non-Spanish-speaking E and L students and families? Because I know things, even like the ARC program is only available in Spanish. So how are we navigating equity in terms of those other E and L students and families that might not be Spanish-speaking?
Right. So the numbers aren't large, right? So we, we kind of make our way through when we have new families. One of the things that we, we have done is we have funding for local BOCs for when we need translators, right? So we can request translators that can support when we need to meet with families or parent-teacher conferences. We've used them in the past, particularly for Albanian families. And, and we also reach out to them when we need to secure resources that aren't just about communication. We ensure that we have glossaries for the students. There is a website that's supported by the ARBURN that has bilingual glossaries for pretty much all languages. And then very excitingly, recently, we were able to use some of our title funds to purchase a little device called a Pocket Talk, which is smaller than a phone, and that can be used for both text and voice translation. We just got the box like two weeks ago. And so those are being sent out, were sent out to principals so that principals have one in the office. But then my canna is ensuring that the library media specialists have them as well so that they can be signed out and can be used for instruction and communications with families. So always looking for different resources to support these families. And then we also, I myself attended, when we received the Ukrainian families, attended professional development to ensure also that we're communicating with families in a very culturally sensitive way and learning about their language practices. So that continues to something that we continue to build, because you never know when you will receive an influx of families from a particular region. I think we just have to be prepared for that.
Right. So even, even just for the existing families though as well. So like, are we able to support them in terms of materials? Like, say, we would get library books or whatever, or books for Spanish-speaking E and L learners and stuff? Would we do the same or make sure we have materials in their native languages as well?
We do, but sometimes that's challenging. We did recently receive a Mandarin-speaking family, and the, the, the elementary math materials are not available. So I've been working with Krista Maria to see what other resources we can secure as well. So it's not always, I mean, I know back in the day, it was very difficult to even get Spanish resources. We've come a long way. So when it's other languages, the materials are not always existing. So we either have to try to secure them in other ways, or we're going to have to create them, which is what we did at the beginning of dual-language.
Right. Okay, yeah, I'm just curious, especially like how we can, the board can support that if there's need for resources in those areas.
But AI is a great thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're, we're just, we're just, we're just learning. We're, we're, um, I just, uh, learned brisk, uh, brisk learning or brisk teaching recently, which is a platform that you can take any article, like on CNN, and it translates it, and you can even set it to a particular grade level for students. So trying to build capacity with our teachers.
Leveraging technology.
Leveraging technology, can't be afraid of it.
Can I just, um, build something maybe off, while Melissa was getting answers? Just going back to that integrated model. That's not a dual-language official class, right? The integrated classroom model is not. Okay, so some of the classes might have as many as forty percent of Ls in it. Some might have two percent, some might have twelve percent, right? Some might, like, you probably have wide ranging of Ls. I guess my question is, how do you ensure the, for the students who are English-native speaking, um, are, are getting the supports they need in that classroom as well for whatever subject's being taught? So you might, so right, because you have a lot of balls, I guess, to juggle in the air. You have to make sure that the students who are Ls understand the material and have the language supports. Then you have students as many as, you know, sixty percent, uh, it would be few as sixty percent because it was the forty percent, or say ninety-nine percent who are English-native speakers but also need to understand the material.
Right.
So how do you make sure, you know, everyone's getting what they need in that classroom, um, all the way around?
So that's why you have two teachers, right? You have the English teacher and the E and L teacher. Um, and there's a lot of intentional co-planning, and we, we build schedules so that they have planning time together so that they can look at the material, they can provide scaffolds for the English learners, or they can provide some accelerated work for those who are ready to move along, right? So a lot of it is very, um, it's, it's differentiation within those classrooms. Um, and so the teachers have to plan very carefully so that they are able to support all students within the classroom. So it's not easy, but it takes a lot of training and a lot of, um, a lot of co-planning. And so we, we support it by providing spaces for them to be able to work together to ensure that they, they're meeting the needs of all learners. And that doesn't always mean that the E and L teacher is sitting in the corner of the room with the English learners. Sometimes it's the English teacher who's sitting in the, who's in the corner with the English learners while the E and L teacher is supporting all the others, right? So it's a careful collaboration and intentional differentiation for all learners within that classroom.
And is there a way, like, how do you decide forty percent versus one percent? Is there sort of a magic formula?
We don't really have a magic formula. We're at forty percent or over with our numbers right now, right? It's not, it's, we leave spaces within the classroom. They're rostered on separate rosters so that we're trying not to exceed, um, that number. But very honestly, if we look at Austin High School, we're at least forty percent in most of our classes, right?
Okay, so most of the classes in Austin High School have more than forty percent.
For the Engla, the E and L ELA, those that are targeted, E and L ELA, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, this is, uh, oh, I'm sorry. So these are some of our initiatives to support our parents. We have parent orientation at intake, which is actually mandated by Part 154. We have fall E and L family information nights, which are very well-attended. Um, we have orientation for dual-language families. We have, uh, I run a session to ensure that families understand, um, what is required for the NICE to flat, and they can help their child prepare at home for it. Um, our local, uh, Rick sends out NICE to flat reports to families. Those are mailed directly, oh, after the, um, summer results come in, and, uh, it shows where their child, if their child scores, what their level is, and has a little explanation as to what does that level mean. But then we also receive copies of that report. I distribute them to our E and L teachers so that they have those in hand for parent-teacher conferences so that they can sit there and answer questions related to their child's level and also provide, um, some information on the child's progress and also how the parent can support at home. We continue to have lots of partnerships to support literacy development in the home for adults as well. Um, so lots of adult E and L classes, and some of our own E and L teachers are the ones who teach the adult E and L classes through, um, BOCs at the high school. And we continue our partnership with Manhattanville CSI to really build parent leadership, which is very important because we want our, um, English learner parents to continue to also have a voice and advocate for their children. And so I'm very grateful, this is Michelle Buckhouse. Uh, Michelle is our new family intake liaison, and I'm very grateful to, um, Ms. Fox Salter and Ms. Meyer and to the board for the support in securing her because, because of our numbers, our teachers are not able to keep up with conducting the E and L intakes. And also, we don't want to take away from instructional time. So we are trying to build a seamless system where families register, and if the home language questionnaire shows a language other than English, they go right to Ms. Buckhouse, and she conducts the interview, the screening, supports, provides the orientation, connects the family with resources, and most importantly, ensures that we have documentation that we can share with the counselors and with the person reviewing transcripts at the high school in particular to be able to give students as much credit as we can. Michelle is a retired Austin teacher who has come back to do this service for us, and we were thrilled to have her. Um, oop, it went too fast. So we have, um, we've taken a lot of steps in supporting our English learners, but we do have challenges. But there are also opportunities, and we have opportunities to elevate and enhance some of our programs. Through the budget process, we will be proposing the expansion of dual language to again provide spaces for our bilingual learners, our English learners, and also provide seats for, uh, families in the community who want their child to learn Spanish as a second language. This may not mean that we are adding sections in a particular grade. It may mean that we are converting an existing section to dual language, right? Through careful and intentional staffing. In addition, we will be proposing, uh, additional E and L specialists just based on the needs in terms of some of these bubbles that you're seeing. And we need to ensure that we're providing the mandated services to students and that we're being very careful and intentional in ensuring that we are, we are giving them the mandated number of minutes and that we are helping our students move toward English proficiency and that we're meeting those Part 154 guidelines. And we need to continue to build professional, um, capacity. We need to continue to support our, all of our teachers, not just our E and L teachers or our bilingual teachers, because at any point, our teachers will have English learners in their classroom, and that's what the blueprint says, is that every teacher should be a teacher of Ls and feel confident when an English learner walks into the class that they are able to support them instructionally and differentiate supports for them. Um, we will also be proposing the expansion of some of our extended-day programs. We do fund some of these through Title III. Actually, quite a few of our programs are funded through Title III. We want to continue to provide opportunities for students to gain access to, um, practicing their language skills and also to gain new interests and to support their engagement with school, right? That's, that's critical as well. For our dual-language learners, we want to be able to support their continued language practice, whether you're an English learner or a Spanish learner. We know that this is a demand in the community. Um, I will be very honest in saying that I support three very large departments, and so that's a challenge. It's a challenge to be able to implement some of these extended-day programs. Um, I have spoken to, um, Ms. Fox Salter and Ms. Meyer about additional supports and resources to be able to support what we know is in need within our community. Um, and you'll also be seeing some requests for administrative support because we want to ensure that we have very strong systems that enable us to ensure that our students are receiving the mandated services, that our students are learning, that they're achieving academically, and that they are moving towards graduation. And then last but not least, we should always end with a celebration. And this is a celebration of our seal of biliteracy recipients from last year. I want to say we had close to thirty students who received, I don't think they're all here, who received the seal, uh, for two or more languages. The seal is awarded to students who can show proficiency in two or more languages, develop a portfolio, and meet, um, certain criteria in order, in order to be able to receive the seal. This year, I know for sure that we have twenty-six students who have already completed all of their requirements, according to the SEAL advisor, Mr. Cook told me yesterday, and about fifteen more students who are still working on it. Um, so I'm hopeful that we'll have another lovely photo like this at the end of this year when, uh, we all, and you'll all be invited to celebrate our seal of biliteracy recipients. Questions?
I'd like to, while the board is thinking for a moment, thank Nancy for her leadership, and, um, thank you also to Maria for her work with Nancy on this. Um, you can just tell by the numbers, and we have, uh, you know, a growth in program, and there was a lot of intentionality earlier this year when Maria and I met extensively over the need for intake coordination, the need for coordination, and she shares one, um, clerical staff with three other people with managing well over a thousand students in that. So, um, there are many opportunities for improvement here, and some can be technical in terms of how do we go about it with additional help and support and staffing and teaching needs. But, and again, um, even coordination of after-school, before-school programs. It's not just, you know, hiring teachers to do that and getting volunteers. It's like sending out interest letters, coordinating who's providing the oversight, who's making sure the buses show up, who, who supports all of that. So again, um, opportunities for improvement, as we mentioned, and again, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, great presentation, a lot packed in there, a lot, a lot being done. It's good to see even the numbers of the students who are, um, you know, receiving the seal of biliteracy. Looks like that's grown since the last cohort already.
Yes.
Yeah, great work, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just echo, outstanding presentation. Thank you for all the efforts in evolving the program. Like every, it's another signature Austin program, and it's just great to see it continue to evolve and with the energy that you put into it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll also say thank you, and this is, it's great to see that you guys have a baseline to start with. And as the data comes in, you guys see what changes, and it's great to be able to respond and react to the data information. But, um, thanks for taking barrage of questions, that kind of happened.
Thank you for your patience, it's been a long night.
To that end, thank you so much for your presentation. It was very data-rich, and you so eloquently answered all of our questions that we aimed at you. And look, you have the support of your colleagues who stayed at the table to watch your presentation.
I have to buy them lunch tomorrow.
So, um, thank you to everyone who presented tonight. Um, I'm sure we'll find this information very helpful going forward as we move, um, along through the year.
And I think we have to give the Board of Education a huge shout-out because the level of depth in these presentations came from a request from this board. So again, thank you to the board for really diving deep into what you needed to know and understand, and then the team were thrilled to be able to provide that with you this evening, so thank you.
All right, you're dismissed. Okay. Moving along to agenda item number three. All right, um, seeing we have no audience here.
Wait, before that?
Oh.
I think we have one still part of that, Alita? Yes, we do, and it's, um, on your, um, if you want to take a look at the two lengthy color-coded presentations. This is an important preliminary step that the board was asking for regarding the funding cliff and certain ESR funds. So we color-coded, um, I want to thank Alita and Nicole for putting this to give you an outline of where we are with, um, the, the funding cliff that we're approaching. Sure. So, Alita?
So I'm going to draw your attention to, um, the highlighted areas, and those are the stimulus funds. So you'll see that the total of stimulus funds, um, that are remaining that end in nine thirty twenty twenty-four is approximately six million dollars. Fortunately, of that amount, only one point five million dollars is recurring because we did use, um, a significant portion of the grant towards purchased services, which is in that three point four million dollar number, um, for the ARP ESR ninety percent. So that, that amount, um, includes, um, our Boys and Girls Club program, um, I believe, um, our tutoring, and also it encompasses, um, money towards the EPC for, um, HVAC work. So you'll recall that we use a significant amount of our, um, ESR funds, our GEAR funds, to pay for one-time expenses, um, a total of four point one million dollars of the total allocation to be applied to the EPC for HVAC work. Um, so that was very important to do it that way, so with the funding cliff is not as large. However, um, the one point five million dollars that needs to be added to the budget if we choose to continue with the staffing that's budgeted there represents a one point five percent approximately increase in the tax levy for two-four, two-five school year. So already, we will be starting off with a one point five percent increase just to put the one point five million dollars worth of personnel and, um, benefits within, um, back into the, the general fund from the federal fund.
Sorry. Yeah, where's the one point five?
Alita, is there, is there more deep? I mean, I'm just a little lost in the, in this, so can you?
So if you look at the, um, the columns, the, the headings.
Yeah.
So look at purchased services, but you're going to be looking on a second sheet. So the purchased services is three point four seven four eight five, do you see that number?
Yes.
Okay, so again, that number represents the Boys and Girls Club after-school. It represents money towards the EPC. Um, we use that for the, uh, air conditioning, um, for the schools, um, as part of the EPC. Um, not all of it was coming through, um, leasing equipment, but it was coming through the stimulus funds. So again, four point one, four point four million dollars of all of the, um, ESR gear, and some of them closed out this year, so you don't see them here, um, was used to, um, pay for HVAC throughout the school district.
All right, so just, just hear me for a second here, I just want to just step to this. One point one one two seven eight four plus the two oh five one two one. Um, I'm assuming that that's right. That is what would be recurring, right? Those two numbers together, that would be recurring annually.
Right, so it's the one point?
It's the, it's on that same line. It's, and if I just kind of line up these columns a little bit with these two pages, it's one, it's one point one plus the two oh five.
So if you look at the salary and benefits, that's the recurring, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
So what, what is not here is that the grant goes to nine thirty twenty twenty-four. So we still have ten percent of the grant that's going to be applied to, um, next year, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay. Is, are?
So this amount looks larger than what I'm saying because, again, there's ten percent left available because the grant doesn't end until nine thirty twenty twenty-four.
So this is a hundred percent right now?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a hundred percent, but ninety percent of it's really what's embedded, and then ten percent of that's going to come in. So a question for you then. If the, is there, are there other grants that could be not listed here outside that could potentially be pursued to cover as we look, go forward? Is there anything else that's outside here that we could potentially look at that, you know? Because I, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of like what we're asking for with the facilities and with the bond and everything else, that's there. Trying to think of what could we do, because I think these, we've heard a lot about these programs. They're good programs to have. Question is, what else can potentially help, help us with this?
Nothing. The only other thing that, and I don't want to, you know, throw that out there, um, we are discussing, um, moving, uh... We are discussing moving first steps into Head Start. So that would be fully funded by Head Start. However, that does not represent a 1.5 million. We're talking about three or four staff members.
Okay.
From Title I. They're being budgeted in Title I.
My only thing on this one is I would say let's try to figure out some potential other options that might potentially be there, whether, if it's not granted, something else. Just because I, I don't think, you know, it probably warrants more discussion, but I just would worry about something just dropping off and going away like that.
So this 1.5 million that I'm talking about represents employees in some cases.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Like the 160,000 of smaller grants are like for the summer and after-school. So those are like hourly types of positions. But again, the other, there's seven positions within this, maybe eight, actually nine, within this $1.5 million that we can't just put somewhere else. There's no, there's no grant.
I'm not saying to put it someplace else, right? I'm just thinking, let's figure out. I'm not even prescribing anything. I'm just saying, let's think about this a little bit more.
Okay. We can think, but let's understand a couple of things. Number one, this does not include the regular rollover for all of our employees. So we haven't even done that yet. So there's no way that we're going to escape not putting this back in general fund unless we cut the positions. And we are not there yet. We have not done a formal rollover for all positions in the school district. So we're going to be working on that next week. But I can assure you that this number is going to increase significantly for the tax levy. And, you know, we did see the ERSCRA's come in, the ERAS rates. There's a percentage increase of about 15% for ERAS pension. TRS, it might be up to 5%. So this is it. Like, we all knew this was coming, and there's not that much creativity that we can do. This, again, does have nothing to do with the bond. That's why the conversations need to be separate. For 2024-25, there's no, the bond has no impact on the tax levy.
It doesn't, right. But I get that. I'm not saying that the one has one to the other, but I'm just saying, let's have further discussions about it.
No, absolutely. But I'm assuring you that we're getting our night shift rates tomorrow, hopefully. But the way things are leaning and looking, it's going to be a significant tax levy potentially increase. Without, I mean, there's only so much creative accounting that we can do, or...
So I think just because the board had asked for the data here, and obviously, at this hour, it's not our, our point isn't to enter into a lengthy discussion about. That will go through the budget process because I'm sure the board will want to see data about how are we using this money, what the positions are for, what the attendance rates are for some of the after-school programs. A lot of that detail, which we talked about at length today at Cabinet, and we will be prepared during the budget season for the board. We will always attempt to see if we can find additional grants when we can. We actually got an email today for another community partner that's been working with DeSelia. The concern we have is that if it's, you know, the titled funds tend to be ongoing grants. You don't want a one-shot, but obviously, we're going to look at any and all potential revenue sources. But again, this was just a highlight as the board requested as to what we were coming off, the federal stimulus money and identification. And the board will get data on how that money is being used and how we feel in terms of effectiveness, right? All the measures that evidence the board would want to see as part of their review process in terms of wanting to include it in the general fund.
Yeah. So can you just clarify, the last thing you said was we're at a baseline of 1.5% on the tax levy? What, if we keep all these things in yellow? Is that what that says?
If we keep the salaries, not all those things in yellow, just the salaries and the benefits.
Just this?
Just the salaries and the benefits.
For these things in yellow?
Not the purchased services, right.
Okay, so it's, right, what you're saying is a one, and again, I understand your point. We'll get more into that, but I just want to make sure I understand. So 1 point, we're at a baseline of potentially a 1.5% increase in the tax levy for next year if we keep salaries and benefits for 1, 2, 3, 4 of these rows?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't include the rest of the budget. I think we're heading towards difficult conversations. I'm just going to say, you know, I've been at the table for a long time, and contractually, you know, your tax cap is going to go there. And I think what Alita's saying is, is that this would be another 1.5% on that.
Yeah.
And you, so you're talking about probably something, if you were to try and keep all this, you'd have to exceed a tax cap, which I think that's a conversation the board has, but we're all going to have viewpoints on that.
And we don't have that cap yet. We don't know what that is.
We don't know what that is yet, and they're going to unfold that story to us. But this is the stuff that we've been through in the past when we've had to put the knife to programs that we knew made a big deal for the district. And the grant money in this climate is very, very tough to get. It was hard to get to this. It's going to be hard to try to replace that. And clearly, they're going to look under wherever they can, but state budget's not great. Federal budget's not great. There's not a lot of people that are just going to give you recurring funds to keep an operational program up. So I think we're headed towards a tough conversation.
So let's have that conversation at a later time then.
Yeah, just, again, we haven't done a rollover yet, but you wanted this information. And again, I think we're in a better position that, in that we did not use all of that money towards recurring expenses. We used it toward one-time expenses because the conversation could have been much worse. But just know that the purchased services does include the Boys and Girls Club. So that is not something that is part of that 1.5% increase.
Welcome to budget season.
I know, right? It's already on us. It feels like it's just constantly happening at some point. All right. Now will be time for public comment then. Seeing no one in the audience. Is there anyone online, Angela? I'm so shocked. Okay. So let's move forward with our consent agenda then. We have already dealt with 4.1. So is there anything? I already? Right. I'm asking if there's anything anybody wishes to break out from 4.2 through 4.5? Okay, I'll take a motion for 4.2 through 4.5. All right, 4.2, resolution to appoint consultants for the 2023-2024 school year. 4.3, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 4th, 2023. 4.4, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 11th, 2023. 4.5, resolution to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 25th, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Moving ahead to our, in our consent agenda to, I'll take a motion. Well, yeah, it's just 5.1. I'll take a motion for item 5.1.
Second.
All right. 5.1, resolution to approve recommended placements. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Is there anything anyone wishes to break out from 6.1 through 6.3? I'll take a motion for 6.1 through 6.3.
So moved.
Second.
All right. 6.1, resolution regarding tax tertiary refund payment 172 Highland Ave LLC. 6.2, resolution regarding acceptance of bonds for the Austining Staff Development Center. 6.3, resolution regarding inter-fund transfers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Personnel matters. Is there anything anyone wishes to break out from 7.1 through 7.10? I'll take a motion for 7.1 through 7.10.
So moved.
Second.
7.1, resolution regarding skirt staff resignations. 7.2, resolution regarding professional staff appointments. 7.3, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments. 7.4, resolution regarding support staff appointments. 7.5, resolution regarding professional staff appointments before after-school programs. 7.6, resolution regarding support staff appointments before after-school programs. 7.7, resolution regarding per diem substitute appointments. 7.8, resolution regarding APPR, annual professional performance review accountability. 7.9, resolution regarding approval of school volunteers. 7.10, resolution regarding professional staff resignations. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Now we're into our policy section. So let's take a look at item 8.1, resolution to adopt policy number 5151 homeless children as a first reading, and we can open it up for discussion. Let me just open my notes here.
Do you have to take a motion to go into this, or no?
We're going to discuss it and then do it one at a time. So...
I think we briefly have given updates about these forthcoming. As a committee, we've given the updates to the board about these, so now this is it.
Yes.
And red.
Basically, the idea is that we are potentially missing families on our questionnaire, so this is an update to that. Do we want to, are we, does anybody want to discuss it? Do we want to go for a? All right. Then can I have a motion to adopt 8.1, resolution to adopt policy number 5151 homeless children as a first reading?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Next, we have 8.2, resolution to adopt policy number 5405 local wellness policy as a first reading, and let's open it up for the board to discuss.
You should take the motion first and then you can open the discussion.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adopt resolution, to adopt policy number 5405 local wellness policy as a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, on this one, so this has been sort of a thing that I've been talking about, which is school lunchtime, one of the things in here. Education Week, September 2023, article pretty much says we should have more school lunchtime. And then specifically cited in that says lunch periods that are also too short disproportionately hurt low-income students. So there's an equity issue here. So I guess the way this works, we have a first reading, and then I guess there's an opportunity, if there's a consensus, to make modifications potentially to the policy. So here, as I like to throw out to the board, having done some research on this, in the proposed policy 5405, we have under the section for lunch regarding the time. The timing mentions that, hold on, yeah, it's 8C. Lunch periods will not be less than 20 minutes. What I've seen elsewhere, and I would, again, have heard anecdotally from quite a few people in the district, even though our lunch periods are 20 minutes, the actual eating time for these students could be as little as five, right? Because the time you get through the line and get your food, and it's heartbreaking personally to me because I've heard it not only for my son, but from a lot of others. So I would propose that we consider, if there's, again, other support for this, that, and what Tarrytown has done in their policy is that it reads, "We'll provide students with at least 10 minutes to eat after sitting down for breakfast and 20 minutes after sitting down for lunch." So the proposal would be potentially, if other board members agree, that we look to have the policy not just be the lunch period itself for 20 minutes, but the actual time to eat would be 20 minutes after sitting down. And then maybe what we do concurrently, and this is an item that I think I put forward to Catherine, maybe the time that this comes back for the second reading or the policy committee can consider, we do a readout on school lunches to get the times of how long it takes to go to the servery. Are there options to sort of do grab and go? And I'm happy to share that article from September 23 from Ed Week on this that gives some very concrete examples of how you could sort of speed up the lines so the students have the 20 minutes to eat. So the net there is, can we consider from the policy committee to make that revision? That it reads that the students will have 20 minutes from the time they're sitting. And we could add for the breakfast piece as well because we're also, as I know, Alita, you were able to get that breakfast for our students, so they have the time to eat. So that's one part of it. And the other part is around the recess piece, also in 5405, which we're discussing. And the recess piece, I'm just going to do a quick search, please bear with me, talks about that this is in physical activity in the proposed policy, that student, that school should provide at least 20 minutes of active daily recess to all elementary students. And again, can maybe consider, if the board, fellow board members agree with this in the consensus, that, just a little bit of a tweak, that White Plains and Tarrytown, for example, talk about active daily recess to all elementary students and add, whenever possible, it be outside. I know we kind of informally do that. I know, again, just speaking firsthand, that principals will always try to get the kids outside when they can, unless it's, what, it's below like 32 degrees, give or take. But again, I do think that's a good tweak to try to encourage, you know, formalization of the outside piece. And just the last quick part of that is, I presume this is what, that all at the elementary level, the kids are getting their recess. What I can tell you, again, I know it's a sample size class of one in Roosevelt in one of the class, now, our son is, he is required to go to a music lesson during one of his recess periods a week. So he is not getting, and the rest, and the other kids who are taking music lessons there are not getting that recess, and I guess it's a scheduling issue. There is an opportunity for those students to come in the morning to make up for it. But then again, that cause, you know, that could be a hardship for parents. So that's not the bigger piece of it. But I guess point is, if we're going to put it into a policy, I guess maybe we could check to see that there's not other instances of kids, whether it's instrument, musical lessons, other things where they're not getting their recess for the week. So that's just a recap, considering if the other board members would consider possible in the policy committee tweaks to this. And then again, yes, maybe we have that readout on food service before we finalize the second reading. Thank you.
I mean, I think there's an operational aspect to that question, and I don't know what the policy committee did in terms of, I'm sure that, I'm sure that with this policy, there was input from the administration. But I think practically speaking, like to change something like that, I would say if we wanted to do something, we would suggest sending this back to the committee and letting them go explore the changes and what the implications would be. Last thing you want to do is put something in that we decide that can't be implemented, and then we're violating the policy, right? And so we don't want to be in that spot, so.
I agree. Why don't we send it back to the committee then?
Okay, so this came up just with no substantive changes. When it was brought to us, I think by Allison Perry. Like, the links to the government websites were updated, and there was one language update that referred to cashless checkout. So I hear what you're saying, Rob. Those constitute substantive changes to the policy to me, which is not kind of organically how it was brought up, and not something I'm really comfortable with right now. I don't disagree that, like, lunch and recess and those breaks in the day are developmentally important for everyone, frankly, not just elementary school students. But what Frank touched on is, I think that this would have, the change you're suggesting right now, especially if we've tried to adopt this policy mid-year, would have such ripple effects. And I think it would cause conflicts with our contracts and major scheduling issues that are difficult to manage, especially mid-year. That I'm not really prepared to go there right now. That feels like a longer-term thing, not something that, like, I don't think that if we say, "Let's go back to the policy committee," we're going to come back next month with a recommendation, and this is how you do it, and here's a whole plan. I feel like this is a much, the suggestion isn't a bad one. It's not one I entirely disagree with. It's just I don't, I don't think we're ready to go there right now. I think that that's going to require a bigger effort and a deeper dive than the policy committee is going to be able to do.
Right. This policy, like you said, it was brought to us just to modify it, to modernize it, I guess I'd say, in some areas. And I think a lot, as important as those particular recommendations are, I think they're just structurally on, in a lot of areas. Um, we wouldn't be able to be consistent with that structurally and also contractually in some areas. But I think it's something to put, like a pin in, sorry, to kind of make sure that we revisit when we're able to actually implement the change without it becoming a inherent violation, but because we're implementing something we're not gonna be able to address district-wide. Um, uniformly, I guess. But I think those are good areas to make sure that we're looking at, um, in terms of this particular policy, to make sure that we're, when we modernize it again, that we're doing it in that particular area.
Would it be worth, um, Melissa, but, you know, and I hear Melissa, you and Christine and Frank, you know, very loud and clear. I'm just saying, would it be worth just a, you know, a, just a further conversation? Not necessarily saying that it's gonna be a change this time, but it's to say, what does it take? What's, what's involved in all of this, just to kind of get some understanding behind it so that we can, we can be.
Well, that part is definitely doable. That's, I'm not shutting that part down. I'm saying the actual, let's change it and then, you know, I don't, I don't think it's on the horizon to change just because, but I think it definitely warrants an expiration to see what it would take to get us there.
Right. And frankly, I'm not sure that's something I want just the policy committee to do. That might be something we want to address as a whole board, um, through a regular meeting. That, that's where I would think that the avenue would be for that.
Yeah, so I get it's like.
I guess the, the first question that I have with that is like, I mean, if there's a question, listen, the goal is kids have enough time to eat and they don't lose, and, and, and can we schedule specials like music not during their lunch period, right? I think those are good things, right? I think the policy committee can go to the superintendent, find out what is, what would this, bigger than a bread box, smaller than a bread box? They, Mary could decide on that, that, you know, I'm gonna go to the principals or I'm not based on what the asks are. And I think the asks are reasonable ones. I don't think there's a lot of work around it. I just, you know, I think there's two things here. Do we need to adopt this to modernize what's going through because of the updates that need to be there? Which I'm okay with doing as a first reading and moving that forward. I do think we should take those things and basically they'll have them on a tick on the agenda of the policy committee to at least get initial exploratory information without spending a ton of time on it, right? And the next meeting, or a couple of meetings down the road, you can come back and say, hey, we asked the question. It is a bigger deal than you think it is, or it's something that we could look to employ for, look at next year. And then over the summer, you might change the policy if they give you a roadmap of how to get there. But if you don't start looking at it, you're never gonna look at it. And I think that's the point I'm hearing all around with all of us talking is if you think it's a good idea, what's it gonna take to do? I imagine if somebody in the administration spoke right now, they'd say there's no way we're gonna do this this year. But let's, at least the committee can ask the question and go through that.
I, I agree.
You wanna do that through the committee instead of like a whole board conversation?
I think, yeah, I think Rob's points could send the email with the points of what it is. And if we were to look to implement it, what would be the impact?
No, and thank you Frank for, for that thoughtful approach. Like, yeah, my, my point was, I agree, it's like chicken and an egg. So if, if in terms of process, we could approve this even as a second reading, that doesn't preclude us from X amount of days later, monthly weeks that we have the readout. And I would say, by the way, that readout, and again, I did send it to Catherine a couple of months ago and said, I'd like, you know, like we're doing here for these other things. Can we get a look at food service? And again, what is the time it looked like? Are there any things changeable? Are we locked in? What are the contracts? So I, I do think it's a broader discussion beyond policy committee. But with that said, so let's say we get it on the agenda, we look at it, and then it's like, okay, we can make it twenty, whatever, twenty minutes. Then we can go back, right? And then change the policy if we adopt any changes in it to match, right? You don't, you don't want to necessarily do it the other way. And I think that's, that's reasonable approach. So yeah, that, that's, that was just what I was getting at. If there's an ability to change the policy down the road to accommodate anything that the board is able to or if anything to, to adjust in food service after we get a readout on it, that, that's cool. That sounds easy.
Yeah, that's always the, that's always a possibility. And that's what I'm, that's the perspective I'm thinking of, that my reply was through, is that we can proceed with the modernized, modernized version as it's presented to us and then always come back when we have more information and continue to modernize it, as with any policy.
Okay.
This issue, this is a space issue. So we don't have enough cafeteria space to accommodate students. So that's why they start their lunch early. Um, that's why, um, they don't have enough time to eat. And now you have CEP where a hundred percent of the students can eat for free. So this is not a food service issue. This is a, a space issue. So I don't know how the policy committee can address, or any of us can address, how, um, things will change unless we make changes to spaces. So we know, we know with Park School coming up, that we're expanding the cafeteria. So in that instance, we can try and identify how, how that is going to change by having more students eat during, um, the lunch period because there's more space. We know that we're, um, making changes to Brookside, um, and I think cafeteria space in the bond, right? Um, so these, these are not, these, this is not a food service issue. This is a space issue. Um, and as far as the breakfast goes, the breakfast is already grab and go. Um, so they, they don't necessarily eat in the caf, uh, cafeteria. Some do, um, that come early, um, but breakfast is grab and go. And then the lunch, again, like it's, it's fitting all of those students, even in this space. This, this space was, um, um, uh, expanded and it's still problematic. They've, during COVID, we had kids eating outside, we had to have people, kids eating outside. We didn't have the space because we had to do the social distancing. So I don't know how, I can give you data from the food service perspective, but I don't know how, um, any of us can determine, um, based on, like put a policy in place that has a direct impact on space. It's a space issue.
Yeah, Elita, I think you're right, you, in terms of the space. I, I don't disagree with you at, at all on that. I think the point is just to kind of start the conversation. I mean, we're, we have to kind of look beyond today. And I know this isn't gonna be a change the policy tomorrow. It's gonna be a change the policy, uh, let's start the conversation about that and look to the future as we do this. I think that's the way to look at this versus it, what it is right this minute. I, I think we have to get away from what it is right this minute.
I think what may be nice to have, and I think what might, some of us might need to hear in order to understand the extent to which space is an issue, is to say, hey, yeah, if we did thirty-minute lunch, let's say. Uh, we have X number of students and X number of classes. Mathematically, that means we're gonna have to start lunch at ten AM and we're gonna have to serve it through two PM. And if that is acceptable to you in an effort to create a longer lunchtime is to have, you know, mealtimes that aren't appropriate, then that's, that's what that would mean. And I'm just saying that I think some of us may appreciate what that would actually look like. Right. As a hypothetical in order to really understand what you're saying.
Oh, that's great, because that's, that's Mary, she's a scheduler.
Yeah, yes. I, I, I basically pulled what in my brain went where Frank went. I heard all of this. I also know the new regulations on the nine hundred, nine ninety. I know about scheduling. I know what the state considers recess, how you can include. So I love the idea of presenting a comprehensive set of information to the board because the, the requests are, no one would disagree with the requests that you have made. It's, these are technical, regulations, space issues, et cetera. Be more than happy to take that as a directive to me, to provide that kind of information, which I'd be delighted to do, uh, over the next few months with the board. No problem whatsoever.
Yeah, no, thank you. I, I guess what I was gonna.
Great question. It's fine.
Can we take, can we take a look at, and in the interim, is there some creative thing we might be able to do without the additional space? Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. But yeah, thank you for the offer to just have a look.
Absolutely.
I think getting the questions written down, submitted, like music lessons during a lunch period, what would be the impact of trying to change that? Is there budgetary? Is there school day? Is there contract? You may come back and say, there's no way you can touch it within the day, or you'd have to carve time out for this and this. And that's the decision, is the, is the administration gonna recommend it, right? But let's get the questions down. It probably won't take a long time for them to do the analysis for us. And it's probably not an easy lift, but it's worth looking at.
Right. And the last quick piece of that is that, you know, again, party size of one, because I haven't spoken to the other families. But now our son's like, ugh, I don't wanna really do my instrument because I want my recess. And now we're like, ah, now we've.
A hundred, a hundred percent.
Party size one, sample size, you know.
And if you have these questions, I guarantee other community members have them and other parents have them. The last thing we want kids to do is not take up their instruments because they would have to. Uh, that's, so totally understand and, uh, we will, and you just heard snippets of some of the operational and organizational.
Right. And that's a whole other conversation. So is, just to, um, gather a consensus, a consensus here on a path forward for that request. Is the agreement here that Rob's gonna email Mary and then Mary's gonna come out with some sort of information for us? Or do we wanna the policy committee to do that? It sounds like it might, just through our discussion right now, might make sense we're in agreement that we might wanna hear more information about that and Mary can provide that and whatever.
Yeah, it's either I'm going to a policy committee meeting or I'm going to some meeting to help inform the steps. So it's all fine.
I would just, and I think you can go right to Mary. I would say that would be my consensus on it.
I mean, at this point, because it sounds like we all wanna hear about it.
Give Mary the flexibility of having some time because we're asking for a lot.
Yes. And this is not something could be implemented right now.
It's gonna be on the agenda at some point.
All right. So in the meantime, um, there is a motion on the floor right now to adopt what we currently have, the changes we currently have as a first read.
Can I add a couple of things?
Sure.
Okay. Um, this might be overstepping on my end into curriculum, but I see a lot of this, well, just at home, I hear a lot of this stuff about healthy and non-healthy, and I just wanna make sure we're not villainizing food. You know, even sweets perform good actions in our bodies and, you know, we don't have to make sugar bad. We don't have to make things bad and make people feel bad for eating them. So I just wanna, I guess, highlight that. I don't know what power I have to influence that, but I wanted to put it out there. Then the other thing is, um, classroom celebrations.
Sorry, Annie, sorry, you're saying, you're just, we're, I'm, I'm just trying to capture. So you're talking about taking the sweets out type of thing? Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to.
Are you talking about the classroom celebration policy?
Right. I'm going, I'm gonna talk about that next.
Because I've read that and we don't live up to that policy.
But, um, okay. So first, this is the whole thing about wellness and educating kids on nutrition and healthy versus unhealthy. I wanna make sure that we're not vilifying foods that are deemed unhealthy and being like, if you eat a bag of chips, you should feel bad about yourself because that was junk food and now go run a lap, you know? It's just the kind of thing that kids pick up on a little bit and you hear it in the younger grades. It's like, oh, I can't have lemonade that has too much sugar. And you, you don't wanna, you, you wanna make sure that kids know how to make smart choices without being like, that food is bad because we need sugar to survive.
I think we have guidelines on the actual food, right?
Okay.
In terms of that, that there are some guidelines on that, that's, that's out there. I think it's policy five, five, five zero or something like that. I think it's, it's something like that. But anyway, whatever that, that number is. And, and I, I think, but there is the other piece of it that, you know, when there are like, like sweets that are being sold. Like, I don't think we have like sodas that are actively being sold in the schools and sweets and other things like that unless kids bring them in. That's, that's one thing. I, and I think that we have had instances where, where that is the case, where there are, there are snacks and sweets being sold during the school day.
It should not be, but we'll look into that.
It's still, it's still a big thing that's over at the high school.
Leeta and I will check into that.
Well, the a la carte items, which could be chips, ice cream, not soda, um, Izzy, things like that, that, that is sold in the cafeteria during the school day.
No, sorry. I'm talking about in, 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 in addition to that, it's, and, and there are, there are still snacks and chips being sold not from the cafeteria, outside of the cafeteria.
That should not be happening.
It is, right.
That should not be happening.
So something that we should talk about that.
That's actually just not, it's against regulations.
Yeah. It's against the contract.
You're supposed to have, it's a smart school, it's a smart snack protocol.
Right.
And it, it came out years ago, but it's very clear that no one should be, um, serving anything like that during the school day. Um, you can do it after the school day, like bake sales and all of that. That should not be occurring during the school day.
I, I think we, we had talked about it at one point and that's still going on.
Still going on. Thank you.
And then the classroom celebrations. I know we don't hold to that, but one a month seems very limited. And, you know, if you have a kid who has a birthday one month and then there's also like a classroom celebration, are you not gonna let the kid have their celebrate, their birthday celebration? I don't know how binding these policies are. Are they just guidelines?
No, they're policies. But, I mean, I, I think that's a good discussion. I don't think that's the discussion, it's because it's like literally a different policy. I'm happy to discuss the, the birthdays, the classroom celebration with policy. Um, because it, it says that, you know, it, it mentions like a focus on nutritious snacks and like trying to keep sweets to once a month, basically. And I don't know how many of, many of us have pretty young kids, where their birthday celebrations and people bring in, and it's not really a policy.
Can I interject for a second?
Sure.
Given the hour and given what we have left to do. I'm gonna, I would propose that we adopt the changes that the committee brought for the pro forma stuff tonight. And if the board has a consensus that we wanna look at the substance of this and the related classroom policy, that we send that to the committee.
I wholeheartedly agree, Frank.
I don't wanna cut off conversation, but I do want to just balance.
All good, let's do it.
But, but fifty-four oh five does very explicitly say, once a month. So if we adopt it, we're saying, yep, once a month. So we're, I mean, maybe it's.
My understanding is we adopt it and then we can ask the committee to look at it again and then we're not bound to it? If that's the case.
Well, it's the existing policy now.
Yeah, this is already, this isn't a new policy.
You're talking about fixing the problem. I don't think we can fix it tonight.
No, no, that, that's fair. But before we second read it to any point, like if we wanted, if the letter, the black and white letter of the law, when the words were, we're gonna need to agree to change it or not change it. But, but, but by, by the time it's adopted, because it says right here, one time a month. So if we agree with that consensus-wise, we're gonna need to change it at some point between now and it goes into effect.
It's already in effect.
I don't, I don't really see a point of adopting this as a first reading. Is it, the que, the question I, in my mind, is, is there anything urgent in these changes that we can't send it back to the committee?
Oh, no. That's what I'm.
With, with, with more comments back from the board? Like if there's something urgent and it, it needs to get done with the timeliness, let's just, then we do it, we do this in a second reading. But any comments, the board can send into the committee.
Well, there's just, I think there's debunked links in the policy right now to government websites that no longer exist. That was the, you know, I, I don't know, we can, we can.
That didn't sound all that urgent because of debunked links, I don't think.
From the, from the level of the attorneys aren't asking us to do it for something immediately, then I would recommend we send this back to the committee. And any questions that board members have, so they get memorialized, send an email in tomorrow sometime with your questions and changes and that you look at it comprehensively. But that's just my two cents. I'm one of the group.
What do we wanna do? There's a motion on the table to adopt. So do I have to take a motion to rescind that? Or can I just rescind it?
No, you make a motion to basically table.
So just make a new motion.
And then you, and then you rescind it afterwards.
Okay. So, um, then I'll, I'll take a motion to table resolution to adopt policy five four zero five, local wellness policy as a first read.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
That's fine.
Okay. Moving on to eight point three, resolution to adopt policy exhibit five four two zero dash E point three, student health services exhibit as a first reading. So I'll take a motion to adopt, I suppose. Uh, resolution eight point three, resolution to adopt policy exhibit number seven four five two zero, or I'm sorry, five four two zero E point three, student health services exhibit as a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion?
I have one question. Um, if I've missed it in the document, please let me know. Um, it, I don't think it's stated, are teachers allowed Epi pens in the classroom or is it just at the nurse? And if it's just at the nurse, how do you make sure the nurse gets there fast enough to deliver it?
So I'm looking at my notes. It says nurses have always been allowed to train unlicensed staff to use Epi pen in case of emergency for a specific student with their personal plan. But our policy now states that we need parent permission. And this policy allows Epi deprim stuck in all buildings and can be administered by anyone who's, like, that there's, so that doesn't have to be the nurse or a specifically treated.
I guess I was just wondering if they are in the classrooms, like.
Um, I don't think that we.
Well, it says in the policy that students are allowed to carry, carry it on them, um, with appropriate approval.
Oh, okay.
So they'll probably have it on their person, but someone will be trained to kind of help them, make sure they're administering it properly.
Thank you. I missed that. We've been here too late.
Does it just ring at twelve o'clock? They want us out. All right. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Next is 8.4, resolution to adopt policy number 5410, School Safety and Educational Climate Reporting as a First Reading. I suppose I'll take a motion to adopt item 8.4, resolution to adopt policy number 5710, School Safety and Educational Climate, SSEC, reporting as a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. 8.5, resolution to adopt policy number 6650, Internal Claims Auditor as a First Reading. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. I'll take a motion to adopt item 8.6, resolution to adopt policy number 6600, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting as a Second Reading. Any discussion?
So moved.
We got to take a motion.
Oh, I, I thought I said that. I'm sorry.
You said it, but you didn't let us so move it, so I, so move it.
Okay, sorry. I apologize.
Annie moved all second.
Should I read it again? No. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Finally, we have 8.7, resolution to adopt policy number 9350, Staff Request for Accommodations Under the American with Disabilities Act as Amended ADAA as a Second Reading.
So moved.
I'll take, I'll take a motion on it.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I'm assuming we have nobody here for public comment. Okay. Now we have board dialogue. So I don't know how much we want to really discuss here and how much we want to table for next time. I know we've had committees meet, but I'm reading the room right now, and I'm thinking we probably mostly want to wait until next time to discuss most of this. If anybody has anything they would like to bring up, speak now.
Super quick question, because I think next week, the 6th, that's our retreat part two, right? And then, so we don't meet till, until December...
The 13th is our next meeting.
So I guess my question is, looking at the agenda, and this is, I guess this is for you, Kim, there is an item that was, you know, tentatively when the agenda was set up, to talk about residency. Is that residence, the update on the residency reverification, is that what that is next, for the 13th?
Yes, if it's on the agenda.
Yes.
That's what it would be. But there is, and I do continue to update everyone in my weekly update. So it will give you updated numbers as to where we are currently.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that besides the retreat coming up, that there, that we have some opportunities to engage in community outreach as a board because there's a meeting with elementary families that'll take place on December 5th at 7 o'clock at Claremont, December 12th for middle school families at 7 o'clock at AMD, and December 11th at 7 o'clock for OHS families, as well as Saturday Explore and Learn on December 16th. So if anybody wants to attend any of those, mark your calendars. All right.
I think I volunteered for that discussion.
All right. Mary, we have executive session, or do we not want to have a, we do have executives?
We don't want to, but I need five minutes.
Okay.
Five minutes, I promise.
There being no further regular business of the board, I will take a motion to enter into the executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of a particular person, corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
We can go to the room.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay. We can go to the room then.